Allah rahmanirahim Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh I greet distinguished I O F A representative and all honourable participants. On behalf of the advisory board of T K B B, I am delighted to be a part of this public organized by on the exposure draft governance standards on the Sharia decision making process. And I would like to thank you for your invitation. I would like to take this opportunity to wish that the meeting will be both productive and fruitful and will contribute significantly to the work in this field. We are aware that standardization efforts in this in the field of Islamic finance are critically important. Standardization is the key to ensuring that the Islamic finance sector, which has a rapid growth potential, grows steadily in compliance with the Sharia principles and becomes a sustainable ecosystem. This is because standardization aims to establish a well-established set of rules that will increase efficiency, help promoting transparency and accountability, and increase confidence in Islamic financial institutions. Accordingly, I O F A has always played a leading role in developing and promoting standardization in Islamic finance. I O F A's Sharia standards are globally recognized and its financial accounting standards, governance and ethical standards are used by Islamic financial institutions around the world. Therefore, on behalf of Islamic finance industry, we would like to thank I O F A for all these valuable efforts and contribution. In this context, the central advisory board has established under the umbrella of T K B B in 2018 with the decision of the Banking Regulation and Supervision Agency as a standard-setting institution to improve Islamic finance practices in Turkey in terms of Sharia compliance and to increase the positive perception within the society by minimizing differences in religions and in regulations and practices. The board has been in operation for five years with seven board members and six experts. To date, the advisory board has taken seventy-eight Sharia decisions and published five Sharia standards. And all standards can be accessed online on the advisory board's website in Turkish, English and Arabic. These standards are share certificate issuance and trade standard, Muradaha standard, Tawaruk standard, Shurit ship standard and Mudarabat standard. In addition, one standard is in the process of publication, non-compliant incomes with the finance and their elimination standard. In relation, two standards are in the process of being drafted, namely the Musharika standard and Vakalla standard. For this reason, I think that these public meetings on standards are very important. And in light, in light of all this, I would like to thank I O F A for organizing this valuable meeting and of and all those who participate in this meeting in order to generate a coherent environment for mutual exchange of experience and knowledge and to contribute to this standards development processes. I wish you all an auspicious and productive meeting. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam. Shukran Doktor Abdurrahman.
Waalaikumsalam.
Shukran Jazal. For my welcoming green marks, I'll talk briefly about two points. First, a brief history about the preparation of the standard and the second is the approach for managing the session. So we started the work on this standard in July 2019. And alhamdulillah with the blessing of Allah, we were able to issue the exposure draft in December 2022. Since then, we held three public hearings. The first was on fourth of May in English language and the second was in Arabic language specifically on twenty-ninth of August. And we held the third public hearing on tenth of October. And this is the fourth and final public hearing for this exposure draft. So what will happen after we finish the public consultation process? We will gather the comments, we will present them to the relevant working group and the board to deliberate and to finalize. And we expect this exposure draft to be finalized by next year. When it comes to the approach for the session, we, the purpose of the session is to get your feedback, to learn from your experience. And therefore, please post your questions in the Q and A tab. If time permits, we can allow for verbal participation as well. And after this session, if you still have some more comment, please feel free to share with us on governance@if.com. No later than thirtieth of November. This is it from my side. Now I would like to invite our brother Umar Mustafa Ansari, the Secretary General of I O F A to deliver his, to start the discussion.
A'uzubillahumma shaytani radheem. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Robbi shahdi sadihi wa yasirli yamri. Wahlu luhthadam milisani yafquhul bali. My dear brother and my, my senior professor doctor Abdurrahman Sawash, my, my sister Fatma Shinar, Sister Zilin, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh to you and to all participants from around the globe who have joined in. And special thanks to T K B B for the coordination and the, and the support that I O F A has been enjoying in recent years. And we believe that, that this is very important that the, that, that Islamic banking associations around the globe, they should work in a model similar to T K B B. We put normally it as a good example of how Islamic banking associations in their, in the respective jurisdictions should work for the mutual benefit, for the collaboration with the regulators, for setting up the right practices, for trainings, the best building, all these things. And we are, we are so proud to have, like, you know, all the time your support and looking forward to continue this thing in future, Insha Allah. I would like to welcome all the participants from around the globe who have joined in for this very important session. And Sister Zahra has already talked a little bit about the history. So I don't want to go into that, but only one thing I would like to mention that Sharia is the, is the centerpiece for Islamic finance. Again, like you know, Islamic finance is just one aspect of the overall Islamic economic system. And the Islamic economic system is just one of the, one of the, you would say, one of the areas, one of the significant areas of the overall system of life that Islam overdeals provides. But considering that our individual and our collective lives, our societies are established in line with the tenets of Sharia in that, but the boundary is defined by Sharia. It is very important that we create systemic mechanisms to ensure that the right decisions are taken and those decisions are implemented in the right way. And this standard actually serves the same purpose. This standard actually adds to the standard issued by I O F A Sharia Board, standard number twenty-nine on stipulation and ethics of fatwa in the institutional framework, which actually talks about how fatwa should be issued by Sharia supervisory boards and how the collective wisdom need to be applied and what are the core principles of Sharia that are included. Actually, I'm, I would like to clarify this thing more because some of the, some of the comments that we received in recent past, because we are going through the public hearings and receiving comment. So some people were confused that this standard is not talking about some of the core principles of fatwa coming from the Sharia and Ushulul Sahq, the style of issuing the fatwa. And actually, I would like to clarify that anybody reading this standard should understand that this standard complements and builds upon and puts additional requirements in addition to the Sharia standard number twenty-nine. This, the way the decisions are made, the way the decisions are understood and implemented, the way the whole process is governed in objective and, and, and objective and independent manner with, with all, like, you know, collective wisdom being applied in the right manner. Even within the options that are available within this, within Sharia, which are the options which need to be applied in line with the Maqasid of Sharia. Similarly, understanding that the, the contexts of Islamic finance have their own unique objectives, characteristics. And while working in a dual banking system, working in a system where Islamic finance is still a niche market as compared to the conventional market finance that has, that has, like, you know, that has grabbed the whole world. From within that, finding your way might need that you need to re-emphasize every time on the Maqasid of, Maqasid of the contexts themselves. Instead of just mimicking, replicating the conventional products, you need to understand what are the key differences and how these differences are to be implemented in the process. All these things are important at the end of the Sharia board, who is the prime authority for doing the Sharia, Sharia decision-making, that is fatwa and rulings. But in addition to that, it is important that every single person in the organization understands the requirements of Sharia, implements Sharia in the right way, makes the right decisions with regard to the Sharia-related options. I remember I used to do a, I think I made this example earlier as well, but I was doing a training on risk management and I asked the audience that who is responsible in the organization for the risk management? Some people said that it is the risk management department. Some people said that it is the management who is responsible for risk management. And some people said that it is the, the, the board of directors or those charged with governance who are responsible for that. My argument was that every single person in the organization is responsible for risk management. I gave the example that the office boy need to know that there should not be any, any door unlocked. He should not, he should make sure that there are no, no, like, you know, no lights, sorry, conditioners open by when the office closes, no risk of short circuit is there. He should know how to use the fire extinguisher. He should know that nobody should be allowed inside, for example, the bank premises to ensure confidentiality. So I'm just giving you an example that every single person in the organization is responsible for risk management. And the same applies to Sharia risk management. That Sharia non-compliance risk also needs to be managed by the whole of the organization in a way that the right decisions are made. One of the most important aspects that we have tried to cover in this standard is the management's responsibility with regard to providing the right information to the Sharia boards. And then, once the things are done and approved by Sharia boards, if there are multiple options, taking the right options. There is one example that I often quote, that one of the largest Islamic banks, Allah bless this founder, their founder, he was taking a decision as a chairman of the board that we do not want to do Tawaruk. Because Tawaruk has its own controversial approaches. And even if it might be allowed while within the Sharia boundaries, if you follow all the requirements, it still it may not meet the objectives of Sharia. So taking a decision at the board level for choosing the right choices. On the other hand, I have another example, a CEO of an Islamic bank who was talking to me and I said that you are choosing the wrong products and all that, these are not close to Maqasid and these are not, like, you know, going to add value to Islamic finances, mimicking conventional. And he said, Umar, when my Sharia board tells me that these are two products which are permissible, once they said these are permissible, this is my decision to sell apples or oranges. Once they say that this is halal, then this is the business decision of the management in the board to, to decide what we want to do. This is something that we need to understand, that the domain of Sharia board does not cover all decisions which are related to Sharia. And obviously, it does not cover lot of domains which are related to ethical practices of Islamic financial institutions. You can, I, I remember people, I remember some people who understand Islamic finance at the base level and sitting at the relationship manager, they ask all the things to be signed in one go. I'm sorry, Islamic finance doesn't work that way. It has a unique procedure to be followed. So first the goods will be purchased as agents, so there has to be agency. Then the goods are to be delivered like in the due capacity, then there has to be confirmation about getting the position as an agent, then there has to be offer and acceptance of sale. And this is how a normal Barabah transition takes place. But if you have people sitting at the, sitting at the front desk who ask the customer to sign all papers in one go, then the objective and the spirit of Sharia is lost. Because it is not only the documentation that can make something permissible according to, you know, the basic concept that we need to understand and we, I quote it often, that na'uzubillah, na'uzubillah, you cannot make fool of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala by just making a bunch of papers. Even you cannot make fool of people for long time just by making a bunch of paper and saying, oh, this bunch of paper is halal, this bunch of paper is haram. Otherwise, we do exactly how the conventional does. I'm sorry, but this way, na'uzubillah, nobody can make fool of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. And I can tell you that even if you think that we can have, like, you know, making fool of people for some time, then people will stand up and start saying that we don't feel any difference. And again, it is not only about how others feel, it is about how we feel, how, how satisfied we are with the processes that we are following in Islamic finance. We need to understand that part that Islamic finance has documentation and it has the legal documentation and it has substance and form. The form and substance of Islamic finance cannot be different from each other. It has to be followed in that in a straight. This standard provides guidance on the whole process in a way that the whole decision-making and decision implementation is done in a holistic way in line with the real objectives of Islamic finance. The one important aspect that I was discussing is that, well, how the management takes it forward. So one of the most important aspects within that is how the management takes matters to the Sharia board for decision-making. Now the problem is that at times, the decision of a decision-maker will be impacted by the way things are presented. It is, it is like, you know, in a hadith, the ma'fum of that hadith is that Nabi Qayyim Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said that at times one of you shouts in front of me in a manner that I feel that he is justified. And if we be aware that it, it happens like this, then he is buying, buying, buying fired. Because if he takes the wrong decision from me, consider it like, you know, by way of using the language, shouting, presenting the case in a way that he seems to be justified, but he's not justified, then be aware that this guy is getting fired, chasing fire, will fire. We need to understand that it, that half of the decision depends on the matter, the way it is presented, evaluated and judged. What evidence is provided? What approach is taken towards having an objective decision-making? This is the whole purpose of this standard and significant part of it relates to the attitude of the management and the Sharia boards. Another very important aspect of this standard that we try to cover is that we have tried to summarize certain significant Maqasid of Maqasid, from, from amongst the Maqasid of Sharia. And we have tabulated them in a manner that how they impact the decision-making, how they should be considered for the Sharia decision-making purposes by the management as well as by the Sharia board. With that, I would like to take you through the standard. I have just saw that there is a comment here in Q and A quick reminder tab. There is comment from, from Farah Mair. Assalamualaikum. Do you think the Islamic finance industry requires its thematic taxonomy from Quran and Sunnah to measure their impact? It is, to be honest, it's a good comment, very good comment, not from within the subject of this standard, but I believe there is something that needs to be done. While doing these things on a, on a pure academic level, it might be something like, you know, very difficult. Having a taxonomy, a thematic taxonomy in that manner might not be an easy task and would be more an academic and less of a, less of a professional and ground-level task. At the ground level, to do, measure the impact, I think there are additional aspects that are to be covered. I O F A has been working in different areas. One of the areas that I O F A has done is we have developed Sharia compliance and traditional rating standards, two standards, one for institutions and one for the instruments, so cook and other instruments. While those rating standards may not serve the whole purpose of very good comment from your side, but they are at least an effort towards assessing the impact and assessing the level and the, and the position of Islamic finance in the market. Thank you very much. Very good comment. Generally, yes, but I believe that to most level it will be like, you know, more academic exercise and not a practical exercise. But the practical exercise that is possible is Sharia compliance and traditional rating that on which we have already developed our governance standards. International Islamic Rating Agency has helped us in that. They are doing their part in that. Thank you very much for very important comment. Now, I think there is a comment with regard to, I can just see how to get this recording after the seminar. This is a comment and I think Sister Zahra, we should clarify this thing on the chat window. I would like to mention that now all our I O F A public hearings are directly given live on YouTube and then they remain available. We are, we are in the process of uploading all previous public hearings on the, on the YouTube channel of I O F A. So you can always approach I O F A's YouTube channel and find recordings of most of these public hearings that are particularly the new ones are always live there as well. You can see a live icon and YouTube link all already available in your, in your Zoom windows. And additionally, you can find the earlier ones on, on the, on the, on the I O F A's YouTube channel. And it reminds us of our responsibility that we are already in the process of, of doing this thing like uploading all the past public hearings. So Insha Allah, this thing will be done in due course as well. Now I will share my screen and today my approach will be, and it is a very long standard. The first two public hearings that I conducted were in a way that the first was more like that we covered most of the body text and the second one we covered, we, we gave more time on the, on the examples and the Maqasid that are covered in appendices. It's a very long standard and both the appendices which are there with regard to the examples of psychological impact as well as the, the Maqasid part, both are very important and very crucial to this, to this standard. But given that even a three-hour public hearing is quite long, to be honest. We are so much thankful to all of you that you have, you have become available, you have taken up time to attend this public hearing and providing comments to I O F A for this one. So from that perspective, I would like to, I would like to just mention today's approach. Today I will try to focus on the significant areas mostly. I will not be able to read all definitions or read all the, all the significant, like, you know, areas of the standard. Rather, our focus will be more towards getting, getting input from the participants. Sister Zahra, I just want to conduct a poll today. Okay, I would like to ask the participants that if they have read the, if they have not read the standard or if they have read the standard, that is number one. Number two, what they feel about the theme of this standard and how good it is for the improvement in the process. So how much they feel like, you know, it can improve the decision-making process. That is, so first question is that before joining, have they read it or have they attended earlier public hearings? So they know about it, number one. Number two is, what is their general view about the contents of this standard? How good they feel this is? And how they feel that it can add value to the Islamic finance market? And number three, what they feel. Okay, okay. Are you noting down the questions, Sister Zahra?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and the third question would be that, that how much they feel particularly of how, if we can create a scale, then how, like, you know, I think in the survey we can create a scale as well. If we can create a scale, then we would like to know at that scale how much they feel that this standard can help in achieving Maqasid Sharia if it is like followed properly. Okay. And the last, and last question will be to what extent they feel that the examples given in this standard, particularly with regard to the cyclical tendencies, which we have tried to come up with, people's actual example, to what extent they feel that they, you can, you can take it based on a scale or you can take it based on a simple question, yes or no, but you need, we need to know that to what extent they feel that it is actually real life, to what extent they feel that, yes, we also, oh, we also observe things like this in the real market. So these are the, these are the questions for which I would like to have a, have a poll today. This is, you know, to be honest, it should have been planned by me earlier, but when we were starting today, I thought that we should be doing a poll today. Thanks to the participants, I can see we have now one hundred and seven participants. So I think we can have a very good poll for this purpose today, Insha Allah. With that, I would like to share my screen, but before that, last request. All of you, please feel free to provide your comments in writing as well within next one, couple of weeks. I think next, within next week, because by end of November, we intend to finalize this standard. It's not sure. There is a planned meeting of the I O F A Governance and Ethic Board and it will be second last meeting of this term of the governance board. So we want to finalize it either in this meeting or the next meeting, it will be the final one. So if we can have more comments in writing, please. There is a question from Brother Wasim Flari, Islamualaikum Waalaikumsalam. So Islamic banking can counter conventional banking. Is it, is it a, okay. Brother Wasim, I think that question for, it might not be quite relevant for today's discussion, to be honest. And for that, I would be always available off nine. But this question, I unfortunately feel that today we have limited time, so I will not take this one because it is related to that. We have comment from Yuki Morimusa. I want to know how Islamic finance can West African people and strategies you are putting in place to West African people. Just one thing to mention, just yesterday we issued letters to our regional, I O F A's regional coordination forum. We have coordination committee. So we are creating regional committees to further collaborate with the regional regulators and stakeholders and Islamic banking association. So there will be four or five regional committees to work with different, with different markets. So first one actually that we just yesterday actually issued the letters for appointment of the committee because we invited sometime back nominations for that. So that is like, you know, already commenced, the work is already commenced. We are already working with some of the, some of the regulators and in the, in the Western Africa, in the Western Africa. And we are, we are willing to enhance this, this collaboration. And as I mentioned, this committee, we believe, will, will have more focus on the West Africa and certain other parts of Africa, particularly for emphasizing on that option of I O F A standards, for understanding of I O F A standards, for developing Islamic finance-related capacity, etc. Probably we will be doing our, our, our events there as well. We are planning that for each regional committee, we will be holding at least one of the regional events, Insha Allah. Thank you very much. Although this comment was not related to today's discussion, but since it was just about an initiative of I O F A, I wanted to make you all aware about it. So that's why I addressed it. But then now going forward, my request will be kindly stick to today's discussions because this standard is quite long. And if we get into other questions like this, we may not be able to complete the discussion, potentially. Just if you allow me to share my screen. I hope all of you can see that. So with that, I would, I'll take it through. I hope all of you can see that. So with that, I would, I'll take it through. Uh I'll, one more important thing that I'll prefer that some senior people I can see that have joined in today. I don't want to name them because some of them might be, might want to comment and some of them might not want to comment. But we, it will be good if we can, if we can, if we can uh uh upgrade uh some of the, some of the participants as uh very senior participants as panelists today to get their feedback. So but we will first wait for their comments coming in. I can see a hand raised by Brother Fazal Azim Azim. Uh just a, just a request that please don't raise the hands for now. Please put the, your questions in the Q and A tab. Because depending on the time availability, Insha Allah will allow some of the participants to speak, to open up their mics and videos and speak up. But for now, uh I would suggest that if we can keep this thing, this thing like you know limited to the questions posed in Q and A tab. So with that, I'm taking you through the standard. We have given you some free, some free summary of and of history and the introduction. So I'm not going to cover these sections right now unless anybody has a comment on the preface and introduction section. Otherwise, I would go ahead and take you forward. One thing I am, I mentioned and I emphasize again that this standard does not replace our Sharia standard twenty nine, does not duplicate the things which are contained in, it, it clarifies a couple of things like the change of fatwa, et cetera, which is already covered in S S twenty nine. But otherwise, the purpose of having this standard is actually to, to add value in addition to what is already issued by A O P as Sharia standard number twenty nine. Now coming to objectives of the standard, the objective of this standard is to set out a comprehensive framework for the Sharia decision making process for Islamic finance institutions and Islamic finance transactions while contemplating the A O P Sharia standard S S twenty nine. Scope, scope, it applies to all, all the Sharia decision making process in Islamic finance institutions, Islamic finance transaction. When we say Islamic finance transaction, it means that even if you are not Islamic financial institution, but if our government or a corporate entity is issuing shahs cook, they should also be having a Sharia board and that Sharia board should be following and the management and the issuer should be following the Sharia decision making process as maximum as possible. Another very important factor is wherever central Sharia boards exist, with the Sharia central Sharia board should also follow this standard. I already mentioned that this standard should be read in conjunction with A O P Sharia standard twenty nine, but it also should be read in conjunction with A O P governance standard eight. Central Sharia board and A O P code of ethics for Islamic finance standards. It's the ethic for Islamic finance professionals, my apologies. Now coming to decisions, definitions. One very important definition, again, I will not be sticking to all definitions, but I would like to emphasize in some of the definitions which are relevant to understand this standard. So decision maker in the specific context of this standard is the individual or body of individuals such as Sharia supervisory board, C S B central Sharia board, a board of directors entrusted with the responsibility as well as authority to apply his or their collective judgment and make a decision duly. Uh Sister Zahra?
Yes, brother.
Uh it should be apply or their collective would be, collective would be in bracket or their collective.
Yes, yes.
Collective be within the bracket with their, okay? Okay. Collective judgment and take a decision duly complying with Sharia principles and rules and considering maqasid Sharia, the higher objectives of Sharia in respect for any matters related to advice compliance with the Sharia principles and rules. Uh Sister, uh just another note for a final proofreading. We need to see if this one also need a reference to the, uh to the maqasidulukhur. Because other places we have referred the decision making process with maqasidulukhur. But for here in decision maker, we have not referred to that. So we need to align the definitions. Just make it my note for final proofreading. So what we are saying that it is mainly the Sharia board and the central Sharia board, but at times decision making is in the hand of people other than Sharia board. So if you go and ask your Sharia board whether tawarok is haram. Tawarok, we take it as a normal example because there are so many Sharia issues and even even tawarok for lot of scholars is just a necessary evil. But even a necessary evil is a evil. We need to understand that. So, so from that perspective, if you go and ask your Sharia board, is tawarok haram? Scholars will mostly say, in line with what is said by A O P Sharia standard number thirty on tawarok, they will say tawarok is not a preferred product, but it is a permissible product subject to it fulfills all the Sharia requirements related to sale, et cetera, particularly those contained in A O P Sharia standard number thirty and Sharia standards on Murabha and Sharia standards on transactions in organized commodity markets. However, this is also, and this also needs to understand that when we say that it is a necessary evil, then the Sharia standards allow it on a need basis. So determining the need itself becomes a Sharia decision, but at times that decision cannot be taken by the Sharia board alone. Now, I'm sitting here as a person. I'm just talking as Umar Mustafan Sari as a person. I need some financing. I go to a bank and the Islamic bank says, okay, you can have personal loan based on tawarok. Assuming that tawarok related Sharia requirements are fulfilled, which I doubt, I never saw a single transaction of tawarok which was hundred percent Sharia compliant as per A O P standards. Sorry to say, but I haven't seen it. They might be there in the market. Now the question is that Umar, even if assuming that tawarok is being, is conducted following Sharia requirements. The question is, Umar also need to assess his need and the bank also need to assess whether Umar has a genuine need. Here, the decision cannot be taken only by the Sharia board. Sharia board can actually provide guidance on how to determine need. But applying that judgment in the real transaction is the need assessment by Umar himself and the need assessment by the bank management. This is just one example to understand that Sharia decision making might involve different individuals within the organization even in addition to the Sharia board. This is only one example. Lot of examples we will discuss. Another example, I already mentioned that uh the chairman of the board and uh may Allah bless him, Sheikh Abdullah Kamil, I was referring to him, referring to Sheikh Khalid Abdullah Kamil, who has been one of the greatest founders and supporters of Islamic finance and has taken some like you know these decisions like this that he didn't prefer tawarok, et cetera. So these are the things that, that are at times managements and owners and those charged with governance decisions, not alone the decisions of Sharia board. So while the core decision of the Sharia board is covered in Sharia standard twenty nine, but how the management puts the question, this is also a decision that management need to take. The management has to do right way of getting decisions. So all these things are to be applied in the right way and right damage. Islamic financial institutions is the standardized definition. Jurisprudential arbitrage, we need to understand this is in line with Sharia standard twenty nine. In the specific context of the standard, it's an effort to develop a transition or product which is seemingly Sharia compliant while circumventing the generally applied Sharia principles and rules through, for example, unjustified use of options available under different schools of thought, the juristic strategies that he las or uses, law of necessity, durura and our public interest maslah. So jurisprudential arbitrage is that you apply these, these uh like these options or options or or durura, maklaha, he las in a unjustified way, in a unjustified manner in order to get a seemingly Sharia compliant product but which has an essence which is not and doesn't meet the maqasidulukhur and doesn't meet the maqasidul, maqasidul Sharia. Okay, we have a, we have a comment, uh comment. Just we have a comment from Yumiko Kokoro. Saudi Arabia has launched implementation of Basel final reform by Saudi banks from July twenty three as presented. Thank you very much. Uh it's good to know. Uh I'm not sure whether it has a direct relevance. You might need to kindly clarify your question if you feel it has a direct link with this standard. Uh Brother Altijani Ahmad, welcome brother. Uh thanks for being with us. Decision maker, is there any chance of disputes between C S S B, C S B, Board of Directors? Uh I think Dr. Altijani, you have a very good question. Uh the purpose of this standard was not, not a decision making, like you know, conflict resolution. We have covered it partially, very limited extent, we have covered that for conflict part. But for us, the most important part is Dr. Altijani that we define Sharia principles and rules in a hierarchy manner. Let me take you to this definition now. I'll jump there. This definition is covered already in A O P's governance and accounting standards already. So from that perspective, I would like to quickly clarify that this is, this definition requires that Sharia principles and rules comply, comprise the Sharia principles and rule defined by the following hierarchy as appropriate. A O P Sharia standards, regulations issued by jurisdictions regulator which relate to Sharia requirements, rulings of central Sharia, central Sharia board, the requirements of financial accounting standards of A O P as related to Sharia, like for example, timing of recognition of asset, timing of recognition of revenue, et cetera, et cetera. The non-discounting of receivables and payables, the approvals and rulings given by S S Bs of five five. So this is the five item hierarchy. If you see, C S B is appearing at number three and S S B is appearing at number five. So, but we have an explanation and the explanation says that in case of interpretation issue, in case of ambiguity, the S S B will be, S S B's clarification will prevail. So actually, this definition itself provides the dispute resolution mechanism. So C S B, C S B's view will override the view of the S S B. If management or board of directors have a view dispute with S S B or the auditors have a dispute with S S B with regard to interpretation of, of A O P Sharia standard or S S B requirements, the, the interpretation applied by Sharia supervisory board will still apply. So while the purpose of this standard is not conflict resolution, we have, we have partially addressed some of these issues. But from A O P's perspective, the most important aspect of determining the Sharia principles and rules is this one. And let me, let me, let me mention that right now we are writing a standard, actually drafting a standard which will clarify how to determine Sharia principles and rules, which means that and the manner in which Sharia principles and rule are to be assessed and determined and applied will be clarified in that standard. So I think that your issue will be resolved significantly. Uh Yumiko Kokoro has presented G twenty Riyadh Summit in strength and capital. I think, thank you very much for your kind comment. It is well noted. Uh now anonymous attendee has a comment. How practical is to incorporate research and development in the decision making process? Actually, uh actually without research and development, we don't believe decision making can be objective. So actually, we are putting lot of research related requirements first on the product development and Sharia compliance teams that before submitting to the board, they should do the research and development. And then Sharia board should apply research and development in research, necessarily research with regard to reaching an opinion on that. So at both ends, we are putting that and actually this is, uh if it is not practical, it needs to be made practical. You cannot just have decisions without doing the right steps, to be honest. It doesn't apply in any of the management theories. It doesn't apply any of the governance theories that you reach decisions without giving due weightage to the information that is needed for that and doing a good analysis of that. That's research, getting the right information and doing an analysis of that information before taking the decision for any management theory or governance theory. This is decision making process which requires research. Without research, if anybody is doing decision making without research, I'm sorry, they are not following the principles of Sharia for that and they are not following the principles of governance for that. Thank you very much. And just a request to all anonymous attendees, if you can kindly rename yourself so that we are aware who is the person putting the comment. Thank you very much. Uh Brother Altijani, coming back to your comment, I believe that I have tried to clarify this part. Some other aspects are there in the decision making process that can clarify the dispute resolution part. Okay, now, non-disciplinary fatwa is an opinion that is based on self-interest and not on proper evidence, does not follow the principles of fatwa and or accumulates weak opinions leading to opinion not acceptable by any school of thought in line with S S twenty nine. Sharia decision in the specific context of the standard includes any fatwa issued by S S B being the sole authority for issuing the fatwa or other directives of resolutions issued by the respective organs of governance in line with their respective responsibilities and authorities with or without the input from the management in relation to an I F I's operations, products and services, general activities or policies which have an implication or is related to the compliance with the I F I with Sharia principles and rules, duly considering maqasidul Sharia and respective maqasidulukhur. Sister Zahra, that is where I was referring that maqasidulukhur were added in this definition. So they need to be aligned in the decision making definition also. Sharia decision making process is an objective consultative process to obtain issue and implement a Sharia. So it includes obtain, issue, implement. Now clarifying again for those scholars who are attending today, particularly for them. Standard twenty nine is mainly about issuance of fatwa. But we are talking about even obtaining the fatwa and implementing the fatwa. Obtaining the fatwa is the part where the management puts the question to the Sharia board. And implementing the fatwa is the part where the decision comes from the Sharia board and then you need to apply it in its true spirit in the, in the field and even if there are choices within the fatwa for permissible, then you need to make the right choice. Sharia principles and rules we briefly discussed already. Maqasid Sharia, again, one of the important definitions and it's a very good definition. I would say that we have coined this definition after considering multiple definitions of maqasid. Uh and this is, again, one thing I would like to clarify. A O P's all governance and accounting standards go through a review of the Sharia committee of the Sharia board of A O P. And that Sharia committee has provided its input in this standard even at the stage of issuing the exposure draft. So al-maqasidul Sharia are the higher objectives of Sharia Islamic law which are meant to protect and safeguard human beings to obedience to Allah Almighty as the creator and in line with Sharia principles and rules. Achieved through the preservation of their being, life, intellect, progeny and wealth and the prioritization of necessities followed by needs, followed by embellishments and complimentary matters. So this is one of the good definitions that you will find for maqasid and we believe it's quite comprehensive definition now. Some of the important aspects that we have covered in this definition include one very important aspect that is if you see in the third line, in line with Sharia principles and rules, because we have seen and observed the tendency at some places that at times some people try to put maqasid above Sharia principles and rules. While, while there has to be a delicate balance in that, but, but we have clarified this part very clearly that maqasid are to be determined in line with Sharia principles and rules and not in contradiction to Sharia principles and rules. And accordingly, maqasid should not be applied. So there are two, it has a two ways sold. So the one side, it applies in addition to Sharia principles and rules to apply even stricter and narrower like you know approaches towards Sharia compliance. So for example, one approach of applying maqasid is to avoid controversial products of Islamic finance that do not add value to the economic and social well-being. But on the other hand, there are some, some people who prioritize the time and say, okay, if it is for the greater objectives of, of human beings, well-being and all that, then it is aligned with maqasid. So you can bypass some of the Sharia principles and rules. So this is very important part in A O P's standard that maqasid are to be applied in addition to and in, in alignment with Sharia principles and rules and not in replacement of that. Maqasidulukhur, the objectives of the contract are the objectives for which the relevant contract is legislated as per Sharia explanation. The objective of the sale contract is to transfer ownership of subject matter of the sale to the buyer against a consideration. The objective of each contract is to transfer ownership of the used product of the leased asset against a consideration and so on. If the sale contract, for example, If the sale contract for example implies retaining ownership of the subject of the sale by the seller till the buyer settles the sale installment, then this shall. Negate the objectives of the contract. Similarly, if the contact of Ijarah implies that loss of the subject matter of the lease will be. Upon the lessy on absolute basis, then this shall be out of the objectives of Ijarah contract. So here we want to say that at times, when we, when we ignore the Maqasidul Akhur. At times it happens that you mimic conventional transactions and the way the Islamic finance transactions factors are applied in, 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 in the, in. Ground does not meet, meet the Maqasidul Akhur rather it looks like more that okay, okay, it was just a bunch of papers. So for example, I issue a Sukuk in which I transfer the ownership of the asset to the customer, to the Sukuk holders. And I just become an agent and I still retain the, retain the asset in my books of account. Sorry, either it's a sale or not a sale. If it is a sale and it follows the Maqasidul Akhur, then the asset needs to become a balance sheet. It has to go out of your balance sheet. So if you say, oh, I made a sale only the purpose of making it Sharia compliant, then again, I'm sorry and my apologies. But you cannot make fool of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Just keep this thing in mind and I, I refer to this thing. That, that one of the most prominent economists and scholars of Islamic finance, Professor Manzarka, once said in a conference which I. I, it is just, you know, it touched my heart. He said. Nabi Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam asked that we cannot combine. He prohibited that you cannot combine uh our sale transaction with our, with our loan transaction. So combining of two contracts in one, uh there are, again, this is only one of the hadith reference, but there are a lot of other, like you know, references which come, allow you not to. Which prohibit you not to combine two contracts in one. He asked, the professor Kaff asked. That you think that there was paper at the time of Nabi Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam that we just make two papers and okay, it becomes halal? Just think of it. Does, does making two different papers make it halal? You need to follow the objectives of the contract and that is why as A O P, we believe that Sharia compliance cannot be achieved only through. And through Sharia standards, through Sharia principles and rules. But rather for that, you need to have implementation, governance and control mechanism in form of very good governance standards. Similarly, you need to have a recording and reporting mechanism in form of very good quality Sharia compliance financial accounting standards. You need to implement a very good spread of transactions through applying the values. For which we develop our codes of ethics and this all subject, shall be subject to counterchecks and auditing. In line with A O P's auditing and governance, auditing and Sharia auditing standard and that is the reason. That as A O P, we believe that all these standards complement each other. So with that, I would like to move on. We just have a very long comment from our brother Mohammed Siraj Najibuddin. Uh if any issues, matters are presented to Sharia board by the management through internal Sharia department. My question is that, does it, that does internal Sharia department should review and do research on the matter presented to Sharia board as well? Further, does internal Sharia department require to present its view to Sharia board? So if it is a duplicate work done by Sharia department and Sharia board, sometimes Sharia board may, view may differ from Sharia department views. Another issue is that if Sharia department view net and favor is not in favor of business requirement, so it may lead to dispute with the management. So how to manage it? What is A O P's view or does this standard cover this? Uh brother Siraj Najibuddin, very good comments, very good, right on point. Only thing is, standard covers it and I will take your comment. When we reach that stage in the standard, we'll try to see if there's any specific aspects of your question which is not covered. So I'll leave this question open for now and we'll, we'll like to know, when we reach that stage and Insha Allah. I'll try to address your question and we'll make sure that nothing is missed out. Now, what are the key areas of S B M process? So we are saying that S S B is the, is the primary organ of, of S B M. And then one of the key areas is fatwas and other S S B decisions. First part is product approval. The S S B is required to approve the product. There, there are standard products and there are. Uh non-standard or unique products. So we have put in some requirements with regard to the, to the, to the, uh to the, to what needs to be. Like you know, uh what need to be followed there. So product concept paper should be there. The final version of legal documentation, transaction recording and reporting for accounting purpose. We believe that. Sharia decision-making should include how the transaction needs to be accounted for. We know that good Sharia boards actually do that. But we have put it as a requirement. Then I P mapping is also another very important area that how the transaction will be. Recorded and mapped in the I P system. Marketing material is very important which is at times mixed up, missed out. So it is very important that the marketing material and standard operating procedures, manual product program, all these things. Should be part of the decision-making process for the standard products. Because those products are once approved and then they are followed in the, in the, in the, in the, in the due course. Non-standard products include review of structure of legal documentation, et cetera, and review of transaction recording and the reporting, approval. Of the Sharia pronouncement. So these are some of the requirements which are there for the, which are part of the. Sharia decision-making process relegating to product approvals. Then we have product approvals, we have queries, we have observation. So first part is product approval which is a standard and non-standard which is covered here. Then we have queries. Queries are which are like you know, which are, which are raised by the management. Or different, or different stakeholders within the organization or outside about, about Sharia views with regard to certain matters. So they are include transactional queries and non-transactional queries which may include, uh these may include financial queries. And, and, and the non-financial queries related to marketing promotion, human resource, et cetera. And there are development queries which are tied to the standard products like you know, enhanced processes, et cetera. So. We have covered different type of like queries that can be a part of the Sharia decision-making process. So the product approval was there, queries were there. The third very important part is the observation. Observation is when, when the internal Sharia audit, external Sharia audit, Sharia compliance function, even the external stakeholders like central bank. The regula, the regulators inspection team, anybody raises that question with regard to something that is happening in the institution. Or any possible violation which is there. So observations actually. Uh are part of like you know, again, an important part of the Sharia decision-making process at the end of fatwa and S S B decisions. So those observations have to follow the minimum requirements that, that like you know, that some of them can be, can be part of. Agenda points of S S B, some, like you know, for example Sharia board were discussing a point and they, they identified, okay, this is also need to be checked. So that is an observation that can come up. Then there can, there can be some observations coming as a market information. Okay, something bad is happening in the market or something. Good is happening in the market and you need to assess your processes and your products according to that. There, there is the third part, frequent issues arising in a specific area. So if there are. There are some like you know Sharia non-compliance issues in a specific type of transaction or a specific type of business that is being dealt with. These are to be done. A very important area for observations is that whenever the central Sharia board comes up with new rulings. And whenever, whenever uh this uh new Sharia standard from A O P comes up. So there will be new observations coming up because of these new regulatory requirements, new Sharia standard and new regulator, resolution. There's a mic switch on. Sister Zahra, your mic is on, I think. Yeah, I think just check that you know mics are on, okay. There was some sound in the background I heard. Okay. Now coming to, so the first part was Sharia board fatwas and decision. The second part is central Sharia board decisions and fatwas. Here there are some areas, we have, we have developed our standard G S A. On the central Sharia board. So this section is actually adding to that and we are saying that in addition to the general Sharia board considerations. Central Sharia board should have additional considerations. Now what are those additional considerations we need to understand? Number one, a broader picture and macro vision for each decision whereas in individual S S B's micro vision is subject to a particular I F I and stakeholders. So central Sharia boards need to take decisions in a broader interest. Uh we know that there are some central Sharia boards that have not allowed again. Uh my apologies, I refer to Tawaruk a lot because this is the most common example, but we know that there are central Sharia boards. Who have prohibited Tawaruk in their jurisdictions. Why? Because they believe that the way Tawaruk is exercised is not as per Sharia. Rules and principles as they believe and additionally because they are not convinced that there is a genuine need for that. So this is coming through a macro vision. There are lot of other situations you will find like for example. Uh like you know, if Islamic banks are placing funds with the conventional finance, so at times. Uh at times the central Sharia boards can prohibit that, prohibit that. I'm just putting some of the examples. That individual Sharia board in the interest of the individual institution may consider something permissible and allow it. So while it may not be completely haram, but a broader perspective and the macro vision. That can, needs to be applied by central Sharia board can improve the things in the overall market. Due consideration to wider interest of the overall Islamic finance industry in a jurisdiction, its long-term development as opposed to the specific interest of individual I F I. So for example, I remember one I F I was doing a transaction which is controversial. The second I F I was not doing it. Now, the central Sharia board need to come up with the, and because. The institution which is not doing it to just for remaining Sharia compliant is always at a commercial disadvantage as well. Similarly, at times there is a huge reputation risk. You need to see the item number C also due consideration to the public interest. So some of the institutions do a product which create a reputation risk for the whole industry. Even if other banks are not doing that product. So considering these things, the Sharia board, the central Sharia board need to apply the wider interest of the industry. And due consideration to the public interest. In particular, due consideration to public interest includes that at times placing money with the conventional banks. Or placing money outside of the country at times can result in a situation that the economic benefit that needs to be passed on is not there. Similarly, central Sharia board can consider some of the factors from the public interest. For example, what is, I'm just putting a question. Like what would be appropriate Mudarik share and what would be the difference between the minimum and maximum weightages? That are applied to the investment accounts. This is something in the public interest. While you can say, oh Sharia does not prohibit like applying any ratio like one to ninety-nine can be applied. But the point is Sharia also say that you need to be just and fair with your stakeholders and the transaction should be based on fairness. So in order to determine fairness in the broader interest and the public interest, it is important at times that central Sharia board has to play its role. Due consideration to socio-economic developments, other national and global objectives in the broader context of national interest, for example. Application of the sustainability and the climate-related requirements and to, to, because these requirements are mainly aligned with the objective of Sharia. So you need to actually assess and to add what extent these global and national objectives and the socio-economic development objectives. Particularly what we call sustainable finance as a whole in a broader term or responsible finance as a term. So central Sharia board has to play its role in, in promoting in, in the, the social finance, the responsible finance. In the broader socio-economic perspective. More consideration to overall ethical behavior. So the ethical behavior, while individual institution's behavior can be driven by. Sorry to say greed, which is part of the capitalist economic system and everybody is bound like, you know, okay, we want bonuses, we want. We want more profits, we want bonuses, we want more increments and all that. So these are the individual interests. But additionally, we have more considerations applied here with regard to like, like you know, the overall ethical behavior. And again, ethical behavior, I can tell you, uh I have seen lot of time somebody going to Islamic bank and saying, oh. The behavior of the manager of the bank was very bad. Now, this is something that impacts the whole reputation of the Islamic finance industry. I, I, without any disrespect to anybody, I have seen situations where, where they say, okay. The, the, the dress code was not being followed for, for, and, and the behavior and the style of the employees was. Not, not like you know, good enough and professional enough. So these are the complaints that can impact overall behavior. So some of the, of the, uh public interest and the overall confidence of the people and the reputation of the industry, all these things are dependent on that. So from that perspective, it is quite important. And we now have, we now have this poll, uh, uh, this poll on the, on the, on the, on the, on the screen. Uh let me just complete this one. In the meanwhile, I like to know, uh you can, let me complete this point and then we go to the poll. So more consideration of the overall ethical behavior, more consideration of Maqasid, Sharia. And, 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 and particularly considering the individual permissions for controversial products. Consideration of the precepts do not harm, non-manipulence, do justice, et cetera. So the, these are very important aspects that are to be considered by the central Sharia board. Now, I'll take you to the, to the poll. So the first question is, have you read the standard before its public hearing session or have you attended previous public hearing? It's a, you have single choice. We just need to mention whether you are aware of this one before joining in. Number two, do you feel that standard can improve Sharia decision-making and add value to Islamic finance industry? So your overall view with regard to, with regard to this standard, to what extent you feel that this standard is going to help? The third question is how much you feel this standard can help in achieving Maqasidul Sharia. So you need to apply. Rating scale that if this standard is applied in its essence, to what extent it can help in achieving Maqasidul Sharia. So you need to rate it from zero to five, five being the higher. So if you feel that this is very well documented. Uh the document standard towards achieving Maqasidul Sharia and its implementation can help big time you apply five or four. Or if you feel that it cannot help at all, it will be zero or one. How much you feel the examples included related to Maqasidul Sharia and financial, psychological tendencies are observing and reflecting real market? This is a very important question. We would like to learn from you to what extent you feel that this is some adding something. I believe this, let you know, having nearly one hundred and twelve people online, I think there are some panelists who cannot vote for it. So nearly one hundred people are there in the participants who, who we request. Uh so we have one hundred and six attendees right now. So can I request all of you to please take a moment? And fill in this poll, please. Sister Zahra, the poll is online. Everybody can fill in.
Yes, brother, they already filled in. Uh we have forty-two people filled in. So participation level is forty percent so far.
Okay, can I request remaining participants also so that at least we can have seventy-five to eighty percent of the participants to actually respond to it, please? Okay, while we are allowing all of you a little bit time, I'm not moving ahead, but I'm just addressing two quick questions. We have a question from, I think Sister Sapura Ramli. Sorry, which to clarification with, which to see clarification with regard to earlier paragraph eight A five. Does it mean S S B is not permitted to delegate the review of marketing materials? Which are dynamic by nature to take full advantage of the prevailing market conditions to I F I's internal Sharia team. Uh and second point is, because, okay, that is related to paragraph thirteen, uh thirteen app. So first let me take it answer. Now, first thing is, A O P has covered limited delegation aspects in multiple places. Uh Sharia, uh but in a nutshell, in a nutshell. We have required in this standard that Sharia board needs to review all these things and approve all these things. When you say that you approve all of it, you need to take responsibility. So a delegation of authority is covered at different places in A O P's standard like Sharia compliance function, standard. And the exposure draft on, on, on Sharia governance framework. But this standard also addresses a little bit about the delegation part. The delegation part is covered in this standard. I will come to that. But the point is. These are the things that are to be approved by Sharia board. So let me give you an example. Just forget about Sharia board. I'm coming from the, the field of accounting. I'm originally a chartered accountant. I was partnered in a study. So when I used to be an audit partner, I used to do consulting for Islamic finance and doing Sharia audits and doing audits as well. So my main career started with audit. Now as a audit partner, when I sign audit report. Can I say that I don't take responsibility of this audit report because the work was done by my junior? Not at all. I know, I know chartered accountants, C P As, other auditors who have been. Who have been barred from doing audits, who have been fired from their organizations, who have been barred. Who have been barred from doing audits, who have been fired from their organizations, who have been barred from. The the respective uh uh public oversight boards and the institutes of charter companies and institutional CPAs. Because they did not fulfill their responsibility, even if the work was not done by them by their own hand. But they had to take the whole responsibility of the audit. Same thing applies here. So while the delegation is acceptable. But delegation means that it does not absolve you from your responsibility. So if something goes wrong, you are responsible because you were originally entrusted with. The responsibility of approving the product which include all these aspects. So just saying that, okay, we delegated. Does not mean that our responsibility ends. It means, yes, you can delegate. To the extent that you can rely and delegation should always be subject to an audit, audit, audit. In audit, we say planning, supervision and review. Planning, supervision and review. So you cannot delegate anything unless you plan it properly, you supervise the delegated function and you review the work. So my humble submission, yes, delegation partially is allowed, but delegation does not mean that your responsibility. That it is taken away from you, you still remain responsible. And while the subject of this standard is not primarily delegation. But I would say that in line with the auditing profession where one person signs the report and takes the whole responsibility. That means that you need to have a planning, supervision and review mechanism. That applies to our Sharia boards as well and we would. We would love if Sharia boards is improve their functioning from the governance aspects in a way. That these delegations and other functions are also better managed and better governed. Thank you very much for your excellent question. I hope that I am able to answer it and some of the aspects are already answered in this standard as well. You have another question, Sapura Ramli, that with regard to paragraph thirteen F. Wish to understand which controversial products are not in line with Maqasid Sharia, can an example be included for clarity? Okay, let me give you a very simple example. There was some time back when one of UF's conferences, uh four, four, five years back. So the the figure might be four, five years back. There was a data shared by a speaker saying that Islamic banks were there at that time nearly two trillion. Nearly two trillion, less than two trillion. He said, out of the two trillion, five hundred billion dollars. Have been passed on to conventional financial institutions through Tawarok and similar mechanism. Now, first thing, Tawarok, we all know is a necessary evil. Second thing. Tawarok, as per UF Sharia standard, is not allowed to finance conventional institutions. So for me, most of the controversial products when we refer to, for me, Tawarok is one of the best examples. But yes, we know there are lot of other the product which have those issues. So for example. There are products related to Ijarah and Indigishing Nusharka also, which principally are correct. Principally are compliant, but the way those are implemented, they become controversial. So for example. There are Ijarah products, Indigishing Nusharka products on created on such lands on which real ownership can never be transferred. Those are created on on some, some, again, I'm not, I'm not saying that all of it is wrong. I'm saying that there are something wrong. My today's subject is not to identify what is wrong. Yes, Tawarok. By default, we say that most of the Tawarok transactions don't follow UF standards. We know this is a market problem. And UF standards say that Tawarok needs to be done in case of need only, while the industry does it left, right and center. So from all these perspectives, for me, the easiest option is saying controversial product. Now, I can refer to certain other situations as well. Let me refer to another situation that the Takapol company books our transaction. And and seeds hundred percent risk to conventional insurance. Now, in fact, while on the front end you have a Takapol, on the back end you are just an agent for conventional insurance. There is a long list of these things and today's unfortunately the subject. Uh is very detailed, we cannot go into all of these, but yes, you will find lot of examples that are there. In this standard, in the appendices, et cetera, as well. Thank you very much again for very good comment. Now, coming to brother Sadak Khan, Assalamualaikum brother Sadak and thank you very much for joining in and I always say that senior people like you. Your attendance is so much encouraging for us and your comments normally are very valuable. The, your question is, the Sharia decision making process is expected to be followed and implemented by Sharia boards of I five. Whether or not this exposure draft was initially shared with the Sharia board of Islamic banks for their Sharia, for their review and feedback. Uh brother Sadak Khan, with the process that we have for the Sharia stand, for the governance standard is that number one. Depending on the subject, we take people who are from different, different areas. So the working group included Sharia scholars. Who are members of the Sharia boards. It included our product development experts, Sharia compliance department people. Uh and auditors and and the other experts on Islamic finance. That is part one. Part two, uh when our Sharia, our governance board include three Sharia scholars by themselves. Who are in Sharia boards or are having the Sharia compliance, heading the Sharia compliance functions. Then we have our Sharia committee of the Sharia board comprising of six members. Six very senior Sharia scholars, four of them are members of the UF Sharia board and sitting on multiple Sharia boards around the globe. They all have reviewed it before it comes as the exposure draft. And then, for this one, uh remind me, uh uh correct me sister Zahra if I'm wrong. But I remember we discussed that we will be specifically with the Sharia scholars for their comments, am I right? Have you shared it?
Yes, yes, brother, we had a, we had a list.
Uf Sharia board and other important Sharia boards, am I right?
We, we did, we did.
Okay, so considering all of it, brother Sadak Khan, we have tried to get maximum inputs from the Sharia scholars as well. But only one thing I would like to clarify. The Sharia decision making process is not only related to Sharia board. It is related to the whole of the institution as a whole holistic process of Sharia decision making. But yes, Sharia board is the centerpiece there. Thank you very much, brother Sadak Khan, for a very good comment and I hope that my answer is. Sufficient for you. If you have any other comment, please let me know. Uh okay, my pleasure, sir. Uh with that, I'll come back to the poll. Sister Zahra, what is the proposition of the poll now?
Okay, let me start with the first question.
Okay, can you share the screen? Can you share the screen? If you, if you, if you have the poll in front of you, you can share the screen, please.
Okay. Just a second, the poll is here. So you can see it now?
No, I can't see it.
Can't see it?
No, I can't see it. I can see only the, your web browser window.
Okay, let me try again.
I can see the poll, but I can't see the poll result.
You want me to read them?
No, I can, when I click on polls, I can't see the poll result. I can see only the poll. So you need to show the result.
I think I, I'm the only one who can see it, but if I share the screen, I should be able to do that. I will share this.
You, maybe you can share your screen, only share your desktop or the full screen and then go for it.
Yes, now, that's what I did the first time.
No, we still can see only the, only the, uh only the, the window. Can you, can you post that poll result on a, on a, on word or Excel and then share the screen?
Okay.
This way?
Let me check. Uh there is no option. It's launched.
Okay, sister, can you just read out the results for now and after the break, during the break, you can give it a try and then we will see. So right now, if you can just read it now, so that might be good enough.
Okay, the results are as follows, sixty eight. Uh out of one hundred and four participated, so that is sixty five percent.
Okay.
And for the first question, have you read the standard? The uh the majority, fifty six percent said yes, they have read it or attended public hearing sessions. While forty four have not read it or attended public hearing sessions. For the second question about do you feel that this standard can improve Sharia decision making and add value to the Islamic finance industry? Ninety four percent said yes, only six percent, that is four out of sixty six, said no. Uh for the third question, how much you feel this standard can help in achieving Maqasid Sharia? Forty one percent said, gave five, the highest scale. Then thirty six percent said four, fourteen said three, eight percent said two. And two percent only said one. This is the third question. For the fourth question, which is how much you feel that the the samples are. Reflect, reflecting and observing real market, twenty four percent said gave five, the highest score. Thirty three gave uh four and then another thirty three gave three. Seven percent gave two and two percent gave one. This is the results so far.
Uh okay, sister, thank you very much. One thing again. I request all of you because shortly we will have to take a break for prayers, now or maybe half hour. So if you all can try to conclude it, I think poll is still on. So those who have not responded, please try to respond on this. So we can have a maximum result from all of you. That is number one. Number two, uh it is, it is, it is good to see that majority feels. That the standard is good and even a significant number feels that the examples are also good. But can we, can we request? And this is a very important one, can we request those who do not feel it does not add, that it does not add value? And those who feel that examples are not like, you know, very good, can we add value to the standard? By getting exact comments from you today or in writing within next couple of weeks. So that we can try to understand what else is needed and what need to be done. To improve this standard. This is very important standard and we want to emphasize on the best quality for it. Uh so with that, I'll, 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 I think sister, it is prayer time in Bahrain, so we can take a break right now as well, I think.
Yes.
So it is eleven thirty three, eleven thirty one in my computer. So we can take a twenty minutes break, I think?
We put fifteen, uh we can.
Okay, it's thirty two, it's eleven thirty two, so we can take a eighteen minutes break till eleven fifty Bahrain time. I, in the meanwhile, I would request all of you who have not responded to the poll, if you can just fill in the poll. And sister Zahra, you can try to like put the poll, and one thing is. Maybe the poll you can be shared, poll results can be shared once the poll, once the poll is closed or completed. I'm not sure about it. I'm just, I'm, I'm not, you know, I've not conducted poll myself. So you just need to check the process. But we request all of you before leaving for a break for fifteen, seventeen minutes. Please, if you can kindly, uh fill in the, uh fill in the, fill in the poll. Thank you very much, everybody, and looking forward to see you after a short while break for prayers. Assalamualaikum.
Shukran.
Sister Zahra, I think it's eleven fifty, I'll make sure to start.
Yes, brother, do you want me to show the results?
Uh that will be good, I think this will allow him, Samiq for everybody again, let's start and I think there are some participants who have left in between. Uh maybe we will be joining back later. Uh but it's a long public hearing, thanks to all of you for your time. Uh so now we can see it's a bigger number that has covered now, I think it's seventy-three people have done now, okay. Okay, so the first is, have you read the standard before public, public hearing? So fifty-six percent read it beforehand, so this is good. Do you feel this standard can improve Sharia decision making and add value? So it is ninety-five, ninety-three percent positive. Uh then we have, uh then we have, how much you feel the standard can help in achieving Makaasat Sharia? So the majority feels at four or five, so if we add four and five, it becomes nearly seventy-four percent, am I right? So seventy-four percent feels, so nobody at is zero, there is one percent at one percent. And six percent and nine percent, so I'm very, very keen that we would request those people, they don't need to mention their names. My point is that the overall objective of this poll, the overall objective of this exercise of this public hearing is to improve the quality of the standard. So particularly those participants who are on the, on the lower band, that is one and two. Can we request them, please kindly provide your comments today or in writing with regard to where you feel particularly that this standard uh does not help that much in achieving Makaasat related to Islamic finance. Again, not Makaasat in general, but Makaasat related to Islamic finance. Next, sister. Uh now, this is also a good point, that, that majority uh that, that, that feel that related to Makaasat, that psychological timing, that sees about the field, the examples are included, are observing and reflecting real market. So if we see, twenty-four percent actually feel that that these are all like majority of them, like maximum of them are real. If we take four also, that becomes thirty-three and twenty-four, it becomes fifty-seven percent. So fifty-seven percent are at four and five. While, while, okay, there are some people who have not responded because I think that the number of people responding to this question is less. But still the, the answer is mostly between four and five. Then three also, that some people feel that somehow these examples are real. So, but again, now we have, there are, there are eight percent people, that is four people, who are on a scale one and two. And again, here, these people are more important for us. To understand where this standard lacks and what needs to be improved. Can I request all of you? Just think about the real life examples that you have in mind. Anything related, send us those examples in your comments today. Or send us those comments in writing for the, for the working group to consider. This can help improving the standard and that is the actual purpose of this one. So with that, I think sister, we can move on. You can now close the poll and save the results for, for the, for the working group and the board. Okay, okay, so comment from Yumiko Kokura is that, that, okay. Actually, the, the, the public hearings are now available on YouTube, but sister Zahra, you can provide the, the the emails of all respective participants are there available, I think, in our, in our sheet. So you can just share the, the link to the recorded public hearing, Insha Allah.
Um brother, will do.
Uh brother Fazul Azim Azim, thank you so much for informative and beneficial speech. Masha Allah, thank you very much, our pleasure and thanks for you to be, for being here. Uh in case of seasonal inventory purchases by the manufacturing industry, for example, cotton, how do we do the accounting for IFI in the client? The standard should like AICPA gives their opinion. Uh to be honest, the topic is completely not relevant to today's discussion. May I suggest if you can kindly note my email address, ohansari@op.com. And, and we can, we can provide you, I will directly provide you some answer or will connect you to the respective colleague. But my, my apologies that I won't be able to take this question right now because it is not related to today's subject. And even today's discussion is like, you know, we have already taken nearly two hours now. And not even one-third of this standard is done. So with that, I would like to, uh to apologize that I'm not able to answer this or any other question which are related to right now. Thank you very much. Sister Zahra, and sister Alia, if you can provide my email address and the email address for, for comments. Governance@op.com and ohansari@op.com in the, in the chat window so that anybody can have access to that. Okay, so with that, we will move ahead now. Let me share my screen again. Okay. Now, for CSB, uh there is one important thing that, that the interpretation related to CSB's matters in the institutional framework should, would also be done by SSB. And in the internal affairs of SSB, of an institution, SSB is the authority. This is just to clarify, again, this partially addresses the dispute resolution requirement that people were referring to. That we, we need to see, everybody has to function in their respective areas of responsibility. Now, so in the key areas of decision-making process, first was fatwas and ruling by SSB, second was fatwas and ruling by CSB. Now we are talking about decisions by the management and organs of governance other than SSB. So while the primary authority of SGM is generally with SSB, there are several aspects of SGM which are responsibility of all governance organs, as I mentioned to you. So one of the important aspects is SSB does not make business decisions. In, in line with the examples that I quoted to you earlier, but, but it, but particularly if there are multiple options available but different from perspective of Makaasat or the broader objectives. The SSB's involvement is limited to SBY and supervision for SGM while the responsibility to conduct business is with the governance and the management. With those charged with the governance and management, SSB may suggest but not, cannot but cannot impose a decision that is based on recommended but not mandatory higher standards of ethics and values. So on ethics and values, SSB mainly recommends but cannot impose that. But this is management and the organs of governance and those charged with governance, that is the board etcetera in particular, who are actually trusted to resolve it. Particularly the board's responsibility, those charged with governance, who are mainly the board of directors, govern the five, I five, the owners and the ultimate authority for setting the strategy and the tone of business operations and relevant decision-making. They shall always ensure that IFI makes the right choices from among the different Sharia compliant options available while giving due attention to ethics, values such as fairness and top currency, rights and expectations of relevant stakeholders in Makaasat. I do not want to go for all details, but they need to have internal policies, they need to make sure that internal policies are developed and implemented in the right way. Then we have the decisions of the senior management, including the CEO and the top management, the C-suite executives, who are the day-to-day decision makers. They also have They also have to make sure that this overall strategy approved by the board of directors. Is, is covered in this way, Sister Dzahra, I think here it is approved by those charged with governance, not board of directors, just for consistency purposes, anything.
Insha Allah.
Okay, then we have, like you know, they're making the right choices. While keeping the balance between the stakeholders' expectations and the Muhassad and operating with institutional policies, a delicate balance is needed on part of the board, those charged with governance. Then a different function that a Sharia compliance department, product development department, internal Sharia audit department and other organs, there are also some decisions to be taken. Now coming to significant considerations in SDM. So first important factor is non-disciplinary fatwa and jurisprudential arbitrage are to be avoided. The second part is Muhassid Sharia should be considered. And the third part is psychological tendencies should be avoided. Coming to the first part, avoidance of non-disciplinary fatwa and jurisprudential arbitrage, again, this is first the main subject of Sharia standard twenty-nine. But here we are referring to the more, the requirement that research should be done, the objective of fatwa research should find the most authentic and reliable opinion. But not to get a predetermined outcome, the biggest problem is that people want to get fatwa to get a predetermined outcome. And we know that this term fatwa shopping has been coined, so that fatwa shopping. To be sorry to say, this jurisprudential arbitrage is technically, some people refer to it as. As like, you know, which is technical term as jurisprudential arbitrage, but some people refer to it as the slang term of fatwa shopping. So the concept is that again, for fatwa shopping or jurisprudential arbitrage normally is not possible when IFSB is there because within SSB you need to follow the thing. But it is even possible that indiscriminate fatwas etcetera may not generally be applicable, if you follow all the governance standards, have a Sharia board and all the regulatory organs requirements are there. There is, there are the organs, but there is another form of non-disciplinary fatwa occurring in IFI by way of intentional replacement of scholars within the SSB. Intended to primarily attain the same objective of non-disciplinary fatwa. So if the continuing members of SSB become aware of such a situation, they shall consider an appropriate course of action. And it is highly recommended on account of good professional ethical practice that in case newly appointed members of SSB or other Sharia decision makers intend to change a previous fatwa. They should prefer be consult their predecessors while management, with, while management where necessary. To understand the rationale and basis of conclusion of the earlier decision, this would significantly improve the objectivity and accuracy of conclusions reached in the SDM process. Avoidance of, the, the, another part is that IFI shall not be involved in proactive search for scholar and Sharia consenting firm with intent to provide favorable fatwa. So even the management and the board should not be just looking for the fatwas of their choices by, by replacing the scholars or appointing Sharia advisory firms. To just get the fatwa of their choice. One very important point is that when a Sharia scholar competent for membership of an SSB, SSB becomes aware that the primary purpose of his appointment in place of another scholar is non-disciplinary fatwa. Accepting such an appointment will be considered a breach of good governance and ethical requirements. So the point is that you have a different view and the existing board has a different view and the management wants to beg you in. Just to get the fatwa changed and you know that this is the primary purpose of that. As a good governance and ethical practice, you should not be accepting it and you should be considering different course of action. A Sharia decision maker in order to avoid non-disciplinary fatwa shall always ensure compliance with Sharia principles and rules and strictly according to the hierarchy. The hierarchy that we have defined already and I, like you know, with regard to Sharia principles and rules which is contained in multiple UFC standards. During the SDM process, Sharia decision maker should also consider the impact of decisions on the reputation of IFI as well as the reputation of the overall industry. Consideration of Muhassad, so the first part was avoidance of jurisprudential arbitrage and non-disciplinary fatwa, the second part is consideration of Muhassad. So now we have again a hierarchy here, so we are saying that SDM process should take into consideration the following, so Sharia principles and rules itself as the hierarchy as we referred to. But then we need to have Muhassid Sharia with due consideration of Muhassidul Akhod and ethics and values. So you need to apply. Sharia principles and rules and additionally you need to apply Muhassid Sharia and when you apply Muhassid Sharia, you should have due consideration of Muhassidul Akhod and ethics and values. And the third part is hierarchy, now this applies the hierarchy, so legitimate business objectives and institutional sustainability, they are important. But they come below the requirements of Muhassad and corporate social responsibility and sustainability consideration, public interest, law of relevant jurisdiction etcetera. They are also within this hierarchy, but they come below the business objectives and organizational sustainability objectives. So this is again very important aspect that Muhassid, Sharia principles and rules and Muhassad are to be applied and while applying Muhassad, due consideration of Muhassidul Akhod, ethics and values. Legitimate business objectives and corporate social responsibility and sustainability of considerations, these are all relevant. I think we have a couple of questions here. So, okay, one question, my apologies, was already there from Brother Jasim Ibrahim, an excellent comment actually. With regard to, that was already there in the break and actually I, I forgot to address it earlier. In general, some of the phrases of the standard need to be reformulated in the context of the Sharia standard according to the same understanding there and some procedure must not restrict considered jurisprudition. Nor obstruct the process of issuing the fatwa such that it becomes a complex process. Brother, Brother Mohammed Jasim, I think it is an excellent comment, only one request. We want to be more specific, we just request you to kindly provide a bit more specific comments rather than general comments. Particularly any, any area where you feel that our, this is standard and the Sharia standard become overlapping or contradicting. I fear that the current version will affect Islamic banks and that they will be forced to give up their Islamic license to be free to additional requirements. Also the Muhassid Sharia, the flexible term that, okay, so the point Brother Mohammed Jasim, this one is current version will affect Islamic bank that they will be forced to give up the Islamic license. I think it's, it's a very like, you know, strong comment from your hand, I, I, I'm not, I'm not fully convinced. I'm not fully convinced that, that this will happen, but if it happens, if it happens. Then my, 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 my worry is that what these banks are doing in the name of Islamic finance today would be my first question. If they are going to that level, that they even give up their license and do the conventional business. Then honestly, I'll be concerned to know what they are doing today, to be honest, to my heart, it is a problem. But again, I, I know that we talk a lot about Tawaruk and, and giving up Tawaruk for banks is not easy. And that was, that is the fear that we have, you open up Tawaruk and then all other products are killed and only Tawaruk survives. Because Tawaruk is just like conventional and the way it is done is exactly like conventional. So eventually for, for the banking sector, for regulators, for everybody, it becomes easy to handle. But from our, from the perspective of Sharia, you need to have risk and reward of the product, you need to be involved in like, you know, sharing the risk and reward period. Like, you know, having, having, having the real business transactions, real freight transactions, all these things. For if any bank is doing that all, I can assure you that they can apply this standard with minimum of effort. But I believe that while I would highly appreciate getting your more comments exactly identifying this one. This is something that I, I feel that is like, you know, it's a bit harsh statement. But yes, we take it very, like you know, very seriously. We are concerned about this statement, we'll take this statement particularly to the board, to the working group, we'll see how they feel about it. What I mentioned, my question and my worry about these banks is what they are doing today that they will be forced to do that. What is there, what is there doing, whatever we are asking is just standardizing the process and bringing things closer to Sharia principles and rules and Muhassad. So if they are completely, completely doing something opposite to that, then my worry is not that they will leave Islamic finance. Or they will give up their license, my worry is what they are doing now in the name of Islamic finance, my dear brother. I'm sorry about that, but my worry is exactly opposite to your worry. Your worry is they will give up license and my worry is what they are doing in the name of Islamic finance today is my worry. I don't want people to use the name of Islamic finance to make fool of people to get the competitive advantage of being Islamic bank. While not fulfilling the requirements of Sharia principles and rules and while not observing Muhassid Sharia. But I can assure you, any bank that is fulfilling Sharia principles and rules in their letter and script will never have any pressure of this standard. Only because the standard is putting some additional requirements on the process would not mean that they have to give up the Islamic banking license. So, so while we take your comment very seriously for the first part of the comment, we'll highly appreciate to get the exact, exact comments that we can address those. Second part, we will, we, 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 we may have, like you know, we'll take it seriously, we'll take it to the board, to the working group and the board. And even to the Sharia committee and we'll see how they look at it. Third, third part, again you have an excellent comment, also the Muhassid Sharia is a flexible term and it's not suitable for use in governance standard based on procedural application. Brother, this is an excellent comment, the problem is today Muhassid Sharia is too much flexible. I, I, I'm not saying that you, when, when we say standardizing does not mean that you put a very fixed set of rules. Here we are trying to provide guidance and broad principles only to see how Muhassid Sharia apply in the institutional framework of Islamic finance. But your comment that for using governance standard based on procedural application which opens the door for non-compliance and conflicted opinions during the audit process. One part of your, of your process, audit process, we are very clear, I refer to the explanation on the Sharia. Principles and rules that interpretation goes with the Sharia board, so the Sharia auditor cannot apply an interpretation different than the Sharia board unless. The Sharia board is having a non-compliance of UFC Sharia standards or a non-compliance of the rulings of the central Sharia board. So that is only situation where auditor can apply their judgment that the regulatory requirement or the Sharia standards or the. Or the, or the central Sharia board rulings are not followed by Sharia board of the institution, in that situation only auditor can challenge it. But the interpretation issue and application issue is still in the hand of the Sharia board as per UFC standard. So the door for audit, I believe, doesn't open, this conflicting opinion for the audit does not open. But thank you very much again, Brother Mohammed Jasim, for excellent comments and highly appreciate if you can provide more specific comments for the Sharia standard related contradiction. So if there is actually a contradiction, we need to remove that without saying, but I can tell you Sharia committee of the Sharia board reviewed it with a scope. That they want to make sure that there is no contradiction with the Sharia standard, so they gave us initial approval before issuing the exposure draft. We'll take this exposure draft back to the Sharia board, Sharia committee and we'll ask if they still feel there is anything in contradiction of the Sharia standard. Then we will amend that, but for that it is important that you kindly provide us more clear, like more clear observations. With reference to the exact paragraph numbers, thank you very much again, Allah bless you for very important comments. Sister Safura Ramli has comments with respect to paragraph twenty-five and twenty-six, suggests to have covered the unhealthy practice of maintaining friendly scholars. For too long for a period to the extent that their scholar become overly familiar with IFI and thus the overconfidence tendency. Perhaps can expand paragraph twenty-six appointment aspect and suggest a cap on how many years a scholar should disdain IFI, IFI too. Sister Safura Ramli, it is an excellent comment, I personally have no disagreement except for the word, using the word maintaining friendly. But let me mention that the exposure draft of the Sharia governance framework that we issued jointly with IFSB actually had this. Had this like, you know, rotation related clause, we have received mixed comments on that. So this is not a subject of this standard, this is subject of the Sharia governance standard. EOFI is working on its part of the Sharia governance framework, you will, you will shortly know about it. So from that perspective, while the EOFI governance and ethics board want to have the rotation requirement, but because of. Having differentiating market views that we receive on the earlier public hearings, so while. I can tell you that I personally and our Sharia and our, our governance and ethics board generally agrees with this observation, but because of certain. Contradicting comments with regard to the rotation requirement, we have not yet formed a final conclusion on that part and while. While I agree with your comment, but since it is a subject of another standard, we do not want to put it here. So we take your comment to the working group and to the board, but probably we might not be putting this requirement here, thank you very much again. Excellent comment, highly appreciated, personally agreed, only issue is that it is, it is a subject of another standard, so needs to be covered there. You cannot have contradicting views in two different standards which try to cover one thing at one place. And on that one, actually we have gone, got contradicting views, so I cannot say what will be the final view of the board, even if the board might be in favor of it. But might, because of the contradicting views of the market, may not be insisting on that, so we'll see how it comes up finally from the board. The comment is valid taken and will be taken to working group and board and I think this comment may be taken to the working group on the respective standard also, Sister Dzahra, please, okay? Okay, we have comment from Isrtoosar, does this mean that some products and services may be approved as being Sharia compliant by some Sharia scholars but not by others? Actually, this is understood, there are products which are allowed by some and not allowed by some, some are broadly. Like some standard, like for example, OIC Islamic Academy says, organize Tawaruk is impermissible. EOFI Sharia standard puts whole requirements on Tawaruk and put if these conditions are there, then. It is permissible, now people consider that there is a difference between OIC Islamic Academy and EOFI, but I can assure you that EOFI's view is the same. If it is organized, that is four parties have organized together, even under EOFI standard, if, if the product goes from party A to party D. And party D is related to party A or they have a pre-arrangement of position, in all these situations, EOFI Sharia standard also does not allow, so principally there is no difference. Why I am saying it, because at times there is a broader difference. Of opinion between scholars and at times there is a difference of opinion from between the scholars in the minute detail. So, so my submission is that yes, it happens. And that is the reason that we have clarified that the Sharia principles and rules should be determined in line with the hierarchy as I referred to in the definition. Which include EOFI Sharia standards to bring global harmony, then country Sharia regulations and central Sharia board rulings of the country. To bring things to the, to harmony in the country and then EOFI accounting standards requirements related to Sharia because they also impact the Sharia, Sharia and implementation of transits. And then it applies the Sharia board, which means that the, in order to bring harmony, you need to apply this hierarchy and that is what we have been following. Is the approval of Islamic firms' products and services depend on the jurisdiction they are to be offered in Anaksoo? What is the conversion point of the harmonization, I think I answered your question already. We have a comment from Brother Rahmatullah, details on for market practice and unsymmetrical advantage of contracting, contracting parties are required along with explanation of Muhassidul Akhod. Excellent comment, Brother Rahmatullah, I think that we would be adding some explanation, Sister Dzahra, please make a note of it, it's a very good practice. Very good comment, I think we should be providing some more guidance on the explanation, so either we add a section or we add some basis of conclusion and further guidance to that.
Okay.
Even, even a small appendix may be added to explain the Muhassidul Akhod like we have kept for Muhassid Sharia. So I think it's a very good point towards finalization of the standard, we need to improve that aspect of Muhassidul Akhod. Let me mention, Muhassidul Akhod was added by the Sharia committee of EOFI Sharia board to the, to this standard. That this needs to be added to be considered, so it was added at the last moment, so maybe all details are not there, but we highly take, take this comment very positively. We'll try to consider further guidance to be provided in this area. Mohammed, Mohammed Mukhtarul Islam, Assalamualaikum, Hukum Alikum, Islam, can we include a standard template for product designing? It will ease and expedite the task, task of SSB, actually there is appendix on product, product designing flow and, and the minimum product related requirements. So Brother Mohammed Mukhtarul Islam, I think we have two areas covered, one is the process flow of a standard, of product development is covered as an appendix to the standard. And number two, what are the minimum contents of the product approval document, so these two things are already covered. After covering these two principal requirements, having a standard template, I think most of the requirements related to template are done, but if you feel. That these requirements are not enough, only in this situation you can put additional comment, then we will take it forward to the, to the working group. Anyway, we'll take all the comments that we received today, we'll be taking that. Then we will take it forward to the, uh, to the working group. Anyway, we'll take all the comments that we received today, we'll be taking that. I have received some, uh, some, uh, some other comments, uh, like, no, okay. Isatou Sar, I don't understand why there should be problems with harmonization with Sharia standard because all should be governed on principle by Jiznam. My question is, do we have non-Muslims in Sharia boards and is the reason the lack of convergence? No, brother Isatou, we need to understand that Sharia has not, is not very strict. Sharia is flexible. There is a path, that within that path that is defined by Sharia, there are some flexibilities available within Sharia. So at times there are flexibilities available within one school of thought. And at times there are flexible, uh, flexibilities available within all acceptable schools of thought. A U F I Sharia board refers to all acceptable Sharia schools of thought and also includes scholars from multiple school of thought who consider these aspects from different, uh, from different angles. Considering all these things, uh, we believe that, uh, that, uh, that convergence should, even Sharia standards of A U F I, you will see that they provide at times some flexibility and they take views from different mazahib, that is different schools of thought of Islam. So the issue is not people being non-Muslim. The issue is, it, issue is different options allowed within Sharia. You know, the, even the laws, the business and practices, they have all different practices at a time, each one of them is considered acceptable. The same applies to Fiqhul Mamla, according to which most of that public dealings which are there are permissible unless they are uh, unless they are considered prohibited because of some of the specific requirements. So considering that lots of common practices which are there in the business market are considered acceptable by Sharia. So it means that you can have more than one view. The issue comes with regard to the minute details, I believe. And those minute details actually are where the scholars at time have different views considering different, uh, mazahib as well as different thought process that they, we, they have. That is the reason that we want to standardize it as maximum as possible and that's why I refer again and again to the Sharia principles and rule definition of A U F I which provides the whole hierarchy. Thank you very much again, sir. Okay, now there is a comment from one of my very respected brothers, Brother Yusuf Adim Siddiki. Uh, can we, uh, okay, right, can, what I suggest, while we don't have enough time, but can you, Sister Zahra, can you kindly, uh, can you, uh, uh, upgrade Brother Yusuf Adim Siddiki as a panelist? And we can take his comments like, you know, we can allow him to open up video and take his comments. So, so, so if, while you allow, I will continue and Brother Yusuf, you can share your comments going forward. Like, you know, uh, we'll, we'll allow you to share. So just allow me to complete this section very quickly. So we are talking about that, that Islamic finance is like, you know, value-based, it has to add value. So you need to consider different broader aspects like even the societal and social aspect, the sustainable development goals, the responsible investment and and the principles of responsible banking and all the things that are coming from the conventional world which are good and to be adopted, these should also be considered in the scheme process. Again, nothing which is controversial, but everything that is the universal, uh, you know, universal truths and universal goods. All these things you need to consider in Sharia decision-making process. And particularly, anything that is coming related to the social, economic and environmental aspects which are actually aligned with Sharia, the Sharia principles and rules and which are aligned with Makasid Sharia in particular. All these things actually are to be considered for that purpose. And for Makasid Sharia, as I mentioned, we have a detailed appendix which covers most of the aspects related to that. Then we have, uh, uh, the, the next section is related to avoidance of psychological tendencies. Before that, we can take comment from Brother Yusuf Adim Siddiki. Brother Yusuf, are you there?
Uh, Assalamualaikum. Yes, sir, I, I'm here. Yeah, I'm here.
Please go ahead with your comments, sir.
Um, basically, uh, first of all, thank you for the session, Masha Allah, it's a very, uh, uh, I, I, I think it's a landmark, uh, for the industry. Because it's a, it's a kind of a standard which is technical governance as, as well as Sharia. So it's a kind of a unique, uh, standard, Insha Allah, which is going to affect not one particular field rather than the entire, uh, Islamic finance industry in terms of raising its quality of products and the opinions and the decision they make. Uh, these, uh, comments are by the respected, uh, Doctor Anas Zarqa, son of, uh, our learned scholarship, Mustafa Zarqa Ali Rahmatullah. So Sheikh Anas couldn't attend and he sent the, uh, he shared with us the recommendations. So I'm, uh, there are four recommendations basically. So I'm sharing with the, if you allow me, I'm going to share the
First, you are highly respected for us, but when you added the name of Sheikh Anas Zarqa, like, you know, it's, like, you know, it's, uh, it's, uh, so these comments are very important for us, highly appreciated uh, for you to attend and to support Sheikh Anas for sending his comments and taking time. Allah bless him. Thank you very much, brother. Please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, the first comment was made by Sheikh, uh, Doctor Anas was uh, when the, any Sharia board is not complying, uh, we know that some of the countries, they have taken a very uh, major and landmark step that, uh, Sharia committees and Sharia boards should comply with the A U F I standards. But, uh, there should be a kind of a disclosure as a recommendation made by Doctor Anas that there should be kind of a disclosure by the Sharia committees and Sharia board when they are not complying with particular, uh, resolutions in their annual Sharia report. So it is, uh, so it should not be taken as a blanket, uh, understanding by the uh, by the common people or the general, uh, public that since the bank or the financial institution is working in X Y Z country, so they are complying by all the resolution, uh, by all the provisions of the A U F I Sharia standards. If they are not complying, so they should mention that these particular, uh, we have taken a stand that the, we are not complying with these particular resolution, uh, provisions. Uh, should I go, uh, should I give their
First thing, first thing, it's an excellent comment, it's an excellent comment. But just a question, a counter question, uh, from you, because Sheikh is not there, so from you. Uh, do you think it, it should be part of the Sharia decision-making standard or should be part of where we put the Sharia, Sharia board report requirement? Because we, we, we have in the, in the Sharia governance framework that, uh, like exposure draft that we shoot, there is a Sharia report format. And, uh, and, uh, uh, probably we might be coming up with a separate Sharia board report standard with a report template. So just, yeah, like hundred percent agreed, it's an excellent comment. The only question is, what is the right placement? This is standard of Sharia decision-making or the standard related to Sharia road report?
Um, I, I, I think the, the first place is definitely, as you correctly said, that the Sharia report, uh, in the Sharia report format. Uh, but, uh, end of the day, it's a Sharia decision-making. So in a secondary level, it can be given or linked to reference to that one. Could be the, uh, one of the things, yeah.
Noted. I think we will take it to working group and board and I believe, but, but that there is no point in disagreement with this point, sir. I think we will try to incorporate it, Insha Allah.
Sure, thank you. Uh, the second, uh, recommendation was there by, uh, uh, Doctor Anas was where the funds are invested. So, uh, we know that the deposits are based on Mudaraba. We know that in Islamic banks, the depositors are Rabbal Mal. But, uh, as per, um, the Doctor Anas comment that uh, the depositors' funds, where are they invested? So we are trying to highlight, given the information uh, that his deposits are invested in these sectors, in these particular areas. And according to him, this, these are the Makasid of Sharia and economic and social, all these aspects which will highlight it. So this is his second comment, so kind of a more disclosure uh, in terms of application and deployment of the funds. Yes, please.
Excellent comment, excellent comment. Now coming to two questions. Uh, one comment, you know, A U F I, uh, uh, as I mentioned, Brother Yusuf earlier as well, that we try to bring all our standards as a package deal. So our accounting standards actually cover these requirements because they, we believe that stakeholders should be, should be knowing about the investments in different assets, et cetera. So that's one part is already there, but now let's take example of U A because you are right now based in U A. So U A adopts our Sharia standard but does not adopt our accounting standards, even doesn't adopt our governance standards as of now. So now the question is, the question will be that if we see that, uh, so there are two approaches. One approach is that as A U F I we cover it, uh, in the accounting standard, so we, we, we say that, okay, it is covered, so it's not a problem. But there is another consideration in governance standard, we put this, this disclosure and transparency consideration. The transparency and disclosure considerations are there in multiple standard. So again, again, I, I believe this is an important, very important point, very important point. But one thing is Sharia board may not have access to this information. It means that this disclosure has to come from the management. So either management puts it in the annual report or puts it in the, in the financial statements. So maybe we can put a requirement that management should put this information for stakeholders to be transparent. If A U F I Sharia sta, accounting standards are adopted, then you follow the requirements of those standards. If those are not there, then minimum of these requirements should be followed. Am I right?
Uh, that's true, uh, uh.
Now, now, just again, a question to, a sub-question to that. Right now, we are in a very advanced stage of developing a governance and, uh, 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 governance standard on management and governance of, governance and management of investment account. Very comprehensive, very detailed standard. It is just approved by the account, by the governance board in its last meeting, but we are putting final touches to issue as exposure draft. So again, the placement issue will come. So the question is, do you think that if we cover it well there, then would it still be needed to be covered here? Just asking. I think something is covered there already.
Okay, uh, the issue is that, that, uh, I, I can understand what's the point of, uh, uh, correctly from the perspective of coverage of the information, it's certainly, it will, uh, solve the purpose as you correctly said. But the point of, uh, uh, Doctor Anas is that, uh, the, the wisdom behind that that, uh, as a layman who is, uh, relying on the Sharia compliance of the bank, uh, he won't be able to read the annual report or understand where it was placed or tweaked in some place or the other. He will, is the first thing he will read, maybe the report of the board of director and the second thing he, he will read. He will, because in the, uh, report of the board of director, they were, they are talking about the business achievement and the challenges. And the second thing he will read, he, he will read that what the four or five Mashaaikh have signed the report. And if, so he is trying to, uh, Sheikh is trying to say that if that report is having that credible information, so he will have a kind of, uh, satisfaction that, yes, I, I am, um, I'm not able to, I have, I don't have to go through the endeavor of finding where the, uh, piece of information is there. So this is what's the, uh, I believe the wisdom of Sheikh's recommendation.
Like, the, no disagreement, only thing we will take it to working group and we'll just, uh, the working group and the board will recommend how to place it in this standard and how, or to refer to other standard as needed, Insha Allah.
Thank you very much. And the third recommendation is about the composition of the Sharia boards. Uh, Sheikh is saying that why there is no voting right, voting right for non-Sharia background people. Uh, Sheikh is saying that sometimes it's argued that the people who have no Sharia background uh, should not be given a voting right because there could be a difference. Now Sheikh is saying that it means if there is no, uh, uh, Fiqhhi ground or jurisprudence grounds for agreement, it means that, that there is a need to consider opinion of an expert. And definitely that expert have to, should be well versed with Sharia. Plus, he, he mentioned, um, that he should be either from, uh, finance, auditing, uh, commercial law uh, and, um, civil law or economics. So he said that people from these particular, uh, uh, areas would, uh, with, uh, definitely, uh, a sound Sharia knowledge. He's, he might not be a Sharia scholar, but giving him an, a voting right will solve the issues where they are not an agreement with, with Sharia scholars. This was his third opinion.
Uh, I personally, I personally endorse it and I personally have seen situations where the central Sharia boards particularly have got significant improvement in their decisions because of expert members, economists, lawyers and back, and accountants. These are the three people who can add significant value to that. That is, that goes without saying. No disagreement, we'll take this comment, but, uh, but Brother Yusuf, this is, issue we have not discussed in this standard. So it will, this comment will go to the other standard where we have this issue, Insha Allah. For the central Sharia board standard which is already in place, we have said that that these people will have, uh, these people will have voting right, but not a voting right in a purely Sharia matter. Purely Sharia matter has said that if the Sherman Sharia board decides that this is a purely Fiqhhi matter of giving a fatwa. Only then these people will not have a voting right. Other than that, in all matters like approving regulations, approving products, et cetera, they will have the voting right. So this is something that I believe that we have already covered in our governance standard number eight. Uh, you know, Masha Allah, Sheikh has very great wisdom in these points. And I believe when you are forwarding these points, you also principally agree with them, so highly appreciated. Uh, in see, in the governance standard eight, it is already covered more or less in the same way except for that purely Sharia matter that when it comes to a fatwa, only then Sharia, only Sharia scholars will vote. Other than that, all matters they will vote. This is as per G S A. Now what happens for the Sharia board, uh, because there are two types of Sharia board. One is central Sharia board, one is institutional Sharia Supraji board. For central Sharia board, the standard is already in place, probably will not for, for the central, for the Sharia supervisory board, we are having difference of opinion. And I believe that Sheikh Anas's comment will be highly valuable for that. We'll add your comment as well because we are in favor of it. So we'll add your comment to that as well. And we believe that even those accountants, lawyers and economists should have a minimum knowledge of Sharia. So it is not that you just go and pick up an accountant who is an experienced accountant, no. The accountant must have knowledge of Sharia, Islamic banking and finance and the Sharia standards so that he can understand how these products work. So his opinion is not just based on conventional view. That is what we have put in, in the fit and proper criteria of the respective exposure draft. I think we highly appreciate this comment and we take it forward, Insha Allah.
Thank you, thank you very much. And the last, uh, recommendation by Sheikh was by Doctor Anas was representation of weaker segment in the Sharia opinion. Um, Doctor Anas made a very valid point that, uh, whenever the decisions are made, so it is considered the, uh, uh, the shareholders of the financial institutions and the financier. But we never look at the, how this would be impacting the retail, individual or small-scale business. So he gave, uh, two examples. The first one is acceleration of payment, uh, whenever, uh, a customer misses even one installment. Now we say that all his installments will become due. Although it is a Fiqhhi opinion, we, we don't, uh, uh, we don't dispute above that, but Sheikh is saying that this opinion is coming from someone who's like, it's not with no consideration of the, uh, of, uh, people from the individual who just missed one payment by, uh, even he did it, but he defaulted, no doubt about it, but suddenly you made all his installments due. Again, in, uh, in, uh, section eight of Ijarah, Sheikh said that uh, in Ijarah, it happens that if the customer, he couldn't pay installment, so he has to pay the, uh, rest of the installments or the installments which ever he paid are considered to be, uh, are gone in the air. He, he doesn't recover anything. So basically Sheikh is, uh, trying to highlight that the role of the, which I think it's, it's, it's the current norm of the consumer protection, if I can put it rightly. So Sheikh is trying to highlight that the consumer protection in the Sharia decision-making is not considered because we have no one to represent these weaker segments of the, uh, of the equation, if, if it, if I can put it rightly. So either the individuals or, uh, the, uh, small businesses scale, we are not talking about a la, uh, a priority banking person or we are not talking about who's bringing, for example, one million dinar or we are not talking about a large corporate who can even put their own terms and condition. We are talking about a very small and weak, economically weak person. He is doing banking, but you are putting some conditions, since we are not having someone in the Sharia decision-making to say, yes. He is, he has to represent them. Yeah, this is the final comment from Sheikh.
Uh, thank you, brother, uh, Yusuf. I think it is again, one of the, um, one of the excellent comments actually. And, uh, you know, on a lighter note, I can recall a discussion similar like this. When somebody said something about Ijtihad and I said, why Ijtihad is in favor of the capitalist only? So I'm not a communist, I'm not a communist, I just believe in the social and, uh, social equality and, uh, and the fairness and justice in Islamic economic system. So my point was why, why the Ijtihad goes only in the favor of, uh, of capitalists? Why it does not come in the favor of the common man? So, but again, uh, this is, uh, this was on a lighter note, uh, hundred percent agreed about Uh hundred percent agreed about this point, even this standard and other standards that we are developing about ethics and all that, they have addressed this issue. But I think this is a very important point raised by Sheikh, that it should come as a consideration, as a specific consideration in the Sharia decision making process. Uh we have talked about mahassid, fairness and all these things. So if we go in detailed examples of these things, we have actually referred to this thing. But I I what I, what I get is that while it is covered in different places, even in this standard and other standards as I referred to, but it is important that we put it as a consideration. Actually, if you see our overall Sharia governance framework goes with two concepts. We say that Islamic finance Sharia governance framework goes in, uh goes aligned with good practices of corporate governance that comes from the conventional side, but then we see that, say that there are two aspects added to that. So first aspect, Sharia compliance, that is that Sharia principles and rules need to be complied with. And the second aspect is we say that additional fiduciary responsibilities. Those additional fiduciary responsibilities because of the nature of the contract that you have with people and the way you deal with the people are very important. So we believe that even the Sharia board has to consider the additional fiduciary responsibilities in the Sharia decision making process. What I'm thinking right now is based on, on the, on the comment by Sheikh, that we consider it as a small, uh as we add a small paragraph or section. While this thing is covered in mahassid separately and in examples of tendencies, et cetera, that we have covered, these things are covered in general. But we need to add a specific para as a, as one part of the requirements of the S D M process that the the fairness and equity with regard to the fiduciary responsibility should be there. So so we will not say that you should go more in favor of weaker party because I think brother Yusuf, there is another argument as well. So for example, if if you are a customer on Ijarah side, but the money is coming to me is also of the junior depositors. Your return will be passed on to them. So while I have my own share out of it, but it, this cycle of profit sharing impacts our junior depositors also. So from that perspective, I cannot say that only a person not making the payment is, is like, you know, the weaker party. So we will, we need to talk about fairness, justice and equity. So what we will try to add as a section is that with regard to the transaction structures and approvals and these type of examples that you are mentioning too, we need to address, uh address the situation of particularly the fiduciary responsibilities with fairness, justice and equity. So we will not say honestly that you go to the weaker side. We will say fairness with the weaker side as well as the other side because other side you see, okay, this is a bank. Bank is the capitalist, but on the other hand, you see that the bank is utilizing money of the junior depositor, which means that this is a cycle on which only one party is not weak, even the other party is weak. So you need to keep a balance. So highly appreciated the point. We will incorporate it probably as a small para or as a small section. Only thing which I slightly differ is that instead of using the word weaker party, we will use fairness and equity in the, in the, between the stakeholders and we can give the examples given by Sheikh and we'll just incorporate them in the way that I'm I'm mentioning. I hope working group and board will agree to that, Insha Allah.
Insha Allah, Insha Allah. Thanks, thank you very much. Thank you for.
Thank you very much, brother Yusuf. I think uh and my, my, my apologies to everybody, maybe I'm running late. But I think that these comments from brother Yusuf and uh Sheikh, uh Sheikh Hanas are excellent. Uh significant value addition to the standard, Insha Allah. We'll take it to the respective uh respective committee. Now we have, uh we have one comment from brother Said in Tiyaz Abbas who said, effective decision making and Sharia compliance give long lasting positive and risk free results for business and society. So these should not be underestimated and ignored. Do you agree? Highly agreed. We believe that this is important to understand the overall uh concept as to how the Islamic finance need to work in the institutional framework and we fully agree with your comment. Now coming to the next part of the standard and again, my apologies, this is a very long standard and it's a so interesting topic that you know that we get into this discussion too much. So avoidance of psychological tendencies is that when you, uh you know, in the management theories, you need to understand that whenever a decision is made, you need to be unbiased. When you say unbiased, it means that there are some human tendencies that impact human decision making, whether it's a individual decision making or it's a collective decision making. But these are the aspects that impact your decision making. So while we have covered some of these in earlier public hearings in more detail, here we have thirty nine examples of these tendencies and uh included in the appendix. And and again, as I mentioned, uh you know, this standard needs a fifteen hours public hearing to be honest. Because last time we had a four hour public hearing, some people have to leave and all that, still we could not complete all of it. Today in three hours, it was even more difficult. Now we are claiming tendency that the things are put in a way that the decision is framed. So I put uh I put the question in a way that you answer the way I desire it and I do not put additional information. I just put the information in a way that you are bound to give the result that I want. Similarly, we have, uh we have the uh the anchoring tendency whereby uh whereby you refer to, the the decision maker refers to the first information received that becomes the anchor point and everything else is, is is depend, uh is you know, built upon that. Which means that your objective and independent decision making is impacted. The initial impression, estimate or idea may have excessive impact on the subsequent thoughts and judgment. And you made the initial idea and then based on that, you built upon information and conclusions based on that rather than applying a completely independent view. The status quo tendency is whereby you do not want to challenge things. And particularly when there are things coming from emotional and preference of the current state of affairs. So then in that situation, sometimes you are actually unable to let you know alternatives which are other than the status quo situation and you you feel that, okay, we don't need to go for that. So some of those status quo situations might be including some past opinions which were based on Zuru or Baslah, but uh like you know, for based on need, maybe that need does not exist today. But the decision is continuing because we are, we are continuing with the status quo. There now, sorry, within the status quo, there are three important aspects that we need to understand. So first is the managerial influence, where the management displays a strong bias in favor of a specific solution and it's already in process. Everything is going on, so nobody wants to challenge it. While it is quite possible that that thing was like good at a given point of time, but may not be good enough or maybe allowed on need basis only at that point of time and may not be right today or may have been started misutilized. Something which was okay, but it is being misutilized now, but you are not challenging that status quo. Resistance against new initiatives. So there is a, on a, on a lighter note, there is a saying that only person who always wants a change is our baby. So means that as a nature, we normally don't want to go for new initiatives, not, not too many people. And particularly in the institutional framework, not too many people want to take new initiatives, new challenges, go to the new areas and i- ideas. Scholarly reputation is one of very important points and we need to decide that this is one of the significant issues that if something has been approved by senior scholars or something has been written by senior scholars and it is in continuing, then most of the time it is never challenged. This is again one of the important status quo consideration. Confirming evidence tendency is that when we want to make an opinion, we try to find only the confirming evidence. We don't want to, so if I make a decision, so if you put a question in front of me, I say, oh, I know the answer. And for that answer, I have some pre- previous information. So I will apply my pre-existing beliefs or hypothesis of that judgment instead of applying a completely fresh look on that. I will not apply, apply, uh like you know, I will not try to collect the contradicting evidence and try to evaluate also the contradicting evidence as to whether that evidence is stronger than the confirming evidence. But confirming evidence tendency again is one of the easiest things. If the, if the Sharia department makes a summary of something, frame the question, apply the framing tendency and then apply, uh apply the confirming evidence tendency by like, you know, addressing the approach that is already in support of something and just utilizing that thing. Again, when we are talking about these tendencies, at one hand, we are talking about the decision makers, but on the other hand, we are talking about the persons who are putting the question and the person who are taking the business decision. So we need to understand that it's not only about Sharia board that they are subject to these tendencies, no. Actually, we all are human and we all are subject to these tendencies, one decision making. So actually, it happens at the end of the Sharia depart- Sharia department. It happens at the end of the product development department. It happens at the end of the management. And at times, it is consciously done to, to, to get the opinions that we want to be achieved. Then uh 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 then we have, again, I'm not going for all detail for this one. Uh exaggerated threat of financial loss tendency, I believe this is the biggest tendency which is used by management all the time. You want the bank to be closed? You want us to be in loss while, like you know, while, while these are the market pressures and market situation is not good and we'll end up in losses? This is something that exaggerated threat of financial loss tendency is very important that we need to understand that how and to what extent the threat of financial loss is real. So for example, a very common situation, I referred to it earlier as well. Oh, the conventional insurance is the only choice and Islam and and that Islamic uh Takaful, uh Rita Kaful is expensive. So how expensive is it? Is it going to put you in losses? Or is it really expensive or not? The question is, whenever a threat of loss comes, this is the easiest point to get the opinion of your choice. Oh, Maslah, Zuru, Radni or out of the two choices, I want to always go for the choice which is more profitable and less risky for me. Because this is the easiest thing where where the risk of loss outweighs the perception of the probability of gain. So the problem is that, that there can be gains, there can be benefits. But instead of doing actual cost versus benefit analysis and cost versus benefit analysis, need to understand the quantitative as well as the qualitative factors. But the tendency is very common that ex- management uses this exaggerated threat of financial loss tendency a lot. We have seen dozens of examples of that. When we discussed it in the working group, when we discussed it in the board, lot of examples, people actually talked about that. Availability tendency, it refers to human tendency of relying on immediate examples that come to a person's mind. So the point is that with regard to a new product approval, you just refer to the immediate similar product approval instead of again applying an independent approach towards evaluation of the decision. So whatever observation, whatever, whatever query, whatever new product comes to you, you need to. And again, the same way, it is the approach used by the management at times, the way they put it, they create a rapport to reference to the availability uh of some other like you know, products here in the same institution or in the market and thing. And the way they apply it is that the decision making and the conclusions that are reached by the decision makers are impacted by the availability tendency. Fundamental attribution error tendency also knows, known as correspondence bias or over attribution effect refers to tendency of over emphasizing the role of personal traits and internal factors coupled with under emphasizing the situational explanation and external influences. So the internal influences per- personal traits actually, actually impact the way you judge a matter. So you judge people rather than judging the matter or you judge the situation internally rather than evaluating in a more holistic way. Hallow effect and reverse hallow effect refer to the tendency of allowing a positive impression arising because of the specific traits about an individual department or institution in one area to positively influence one's decision or opinion in another area, that is the hallow effect. And reverse hallow effect work in a positive manner where your personal view about people, department or institution work in exactly the opposite way. Overconfidence tendency, one of the biggest, biggest like you know, mistakes of us as individuals that at time we have overconfidence in ourselves. So overconfidence means that instead of doing the full exercise of research, development and objective decision making, I'll rush to a conclusion because I have overconfidence in myself. This is something that uh you asked me a question and we, we know, you know that we, we have learnt about some of the uh Aima that used to say Laagri, I don't know. In an answer to majority of the question, instead of outrightly responding to them, oh, I know it all. The question and the thought process that makes you, the the thought process that you feel that, oh, I knew it all is actually one of the biggest threats to the right decision making because the mindset of the person with this overconfidence actually takes it wrong. So this is happening at uh at uh at the end of, uh uh to be honest, I can tell you, it happens a lot at the end of the, uh of the, of the Sharia compliance departments and internal Sharia audits where we have seen people with comparatively lesser knowledge having overconfidence. As much as a person knows according to Sharia and according to the knowledge related philosophies, as much as a person knows, he knows better that I know a little. As much you know, you will start saying, oh, I know as little. Because you know that knowledge is, is a, is a huge ocean out of which each one of us cannot take more than a few drops. So the point is, this overconfidence tendency in the institutional framework is not acceptable and every time the process of Sharia decision making should be objective, the complete process should be followed instead of just making an overconfidence decision regarding any matter. Self-serving tendency refers to the common human tendency to claim more responsibility for successes than for failures. So if something is good, I'll say, oh, I said that. And if something bad, oh, I'll, I want you that. This is something again that this impacts the, impacts that. So anything that comes as a decision, oh, I've already said that on those things, these actually impact the independent decision making. So all these psychological tendencies that we are talking about here in this part section of the standard are related to the, to the whole cycle of decision making where a human tendency which applies to all humans, no exception. Those tendencies affect the decision making process. Just I want to clarify again, we, when we talk about these tendencies, we are not talking about that decision maker is only Sharia board. So we are talking about, oh, Sharia board has these tendencies. No, sorry. The point is, number one, as per this standard, decision makers are not Sharia board only. Sharia board are fatwa making institution, a Swata making, fatwa issuing body, which is mainly covered in Sharia standard twenty nine. This standard is in addition to that, which means number one, decision makers are not only Sharia board. Second thing is, the problem, we know that management at times use these tendencies to get the outcome that they want from the Sharia board. So that's why we are putting responsibilities on the management, putting responsibilities on the Sharia board, putting responsibilities on other Sharia related organs that they need to make sure at all the levels that these psychological tendencies are avoided. Uh again, because of limitation of time, we cannot go to the real examples, but there are thirty nine real life examples and I would suggest all of you to read these, even if you feel that you have some good real life examples for us, please feel free to send them to us. Now, okay, now we have some questions and our time is ending. So I'll take just two minutes to explain more about the remaining parts of the standard and then I'll quickly take some of the questions. And my apologies for like, you know, running overtime, uh but we will try to quickly close it. So first thing is about product development process. So we, one part, important section of this standard is the standardizing the product development process for which we have a appendix for a standardized process. And tho- that appendix app uh covers the whole flow chart of the product development process and we have the minimum requirements related to that. In the, the opinion and fatwa, we have also talked about the standard products what are to be included. And we have uh to talked about, like you know, the, uh talked about some of the, uh some of the requirements with regard to uh the, 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 the process flow which are in line with the best practices. The second part is roles and responsibilities of different organs of governance. So they, the what, what they need to do with regard to S D M, so Sharia board, what they need to do, uh they need to avoid tendence, uh these psychological tendencies and they need to work in line with uh in line with the overall uh process required by this standard to follow, I I follow an objective and independent approach towards decision making. Delegation of authority was a question and here we have covered that delegation of authority part. Uh that in limited delegation of authority can be done and Sharia board will itself decide with regard to these matters uh to, and to the extent and, and to the extent that they can delegate that. But but we have put a requirement for ratification, uh ratification and 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 some additional responsibility to one or more of the members again. But the point is simple that this does not absolve the other S S B members to their responsibility. This is a very important point. But the point is simple that this does not absolve the other SSB members to their responsibilities. This is a very important point. Minimum contents of patwa are again one of the important aspects that we want product structure, documentation of the contracts, original query. Observation, the Sharia rulings, controls of potential major pervasive Sharia non-compliance rates, Sharia basis for issued fatwa. Reservations and dissenting opinions to be documented, but may not be published in the public if if they're required by the regulator, only then you publish them. Signature of all consenting members and the dissent we already asked and state of issuance of fatwa etcetera. Uh then our fatwa shall be provide guidance in respect of timing of recognition of relevant revenues, assets and liabilities. So the minimum of the accounting requirements which are related to Sharia should be covered. Uh delegation part to the Sharia compliance department is covered in Sharia standard, don't standard number nine and here we refer to it. And we put some minimum requirements here. Mechanism for revisiting a previous fatwa, we have covered in more detail. Uh here Sharia standard uh also covers it, but here we have put some more details and controls with regard to that. Uh above presenting queries to the Sharia board, we have asked the management to put minimum all requirements and do doing the necessary research and all the necessary details related to that. Research on Sharia issues is a requirement for Sharia compliance department. The management has its responsibilities with regard to these functions. Then we have uh reporting mechanism, training and culture. This is another important section of the standard which is addressing the reporting mechanism, training and culture with regard to all of it, including the training and the strength and. Sensitization with regard to the summer, the psychological tendencies and how they affect. And then the effective date of the standard is suggested to be one January twenty twenty four. I believe. That we might need to change the effective date because the time we are finalizing it. Might be already big with end of twenty twenty three or beginning of twenty twenty four. So I believe that the time for this will be increased by the board for at least one year. We request you to provide specific comments with regard to the uh effective date as well. Now with that, we will not be able to go through the appendices. One appendix is on the Sharia decision making uh on the product development approval process, which is important. One appendix is. The most important appendix is on the Maqasidu Sharia and how they impact the the functioning of Islamic finance and Islamic financial institutions. Then there is uh there is a appendix on the psychological tendencies example. So all these are covered in appendices. As I said, it's a very long standard covering all in one day. It's not easy in three hours. So we'll request you again. As it is the last public hearing, we'll request all of you again to provide comments and writing. With that, I would stop sharing and go to take final questions and answers and my apologies for being a bit late. But I I hope and I I pray that you might have enjoyed it already. Now coming to first question from brother Siraj Nizbuddin who that was uh. Uh that was related to the internal Sharia department function and research the matters and delegation etcetera. Uh there was one point about that he had, the Sharia board may have differed from Sharia department views. So that is very clear that we have identified the hierarchy and all the requirements are there. The Sharia department has to do their research. And the Sharia board will have to do their research. If Sharia department's research would be sufficient, you don't need Sharia board. You need a senior level Sharia board. To review what is concluded by the Sharia department. But you cannot expect all the senior people sitting in the Sharia board to do all the research by themselves. So they need to be supported by the management through Sharia department doing. The initial research. Our governance standard number nine says that it is better that the Sharia board should have a. Uh Sharia board secretariat. If the large bank is there and then he can uh can afford, there should be a Sharia board secretariat. But if Sharia board secretariat is not there. Then Sharia compliance department of the bank will have to work on that. So a Sharia standard number, governance standard number nine. And the 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 Sharia governance framework exposure draft. They cover most of these aspects in detail and yes, we agree that a part of duplication can be there. But that duplication is needed to assess the assess the right conclusions. Okay, then we have comment again from from uh from Mohammed Adisa. Assalamualaikum Waalaikum As salaam. Your comment is missing here. So I think you might it might have missed it. Fazul Azim has a comment. Okay, my okay, yes, you can contact me. You can contact me. My email address has been provided. We have come in from Isat Ussar, how we do achieve harmonization, convergence of the concepts on application among Sharia boards of Islamic financial institutions to avoid contradiction or. Inconsistency between fatwa and applicable adhisi distribution, thereby providing a proactive role for Sharia boards of I five. The quick answer is, I have addressed this issue earlier in today's discussion, applying the Sharia principles and rules hierarchy. Sharia principles and rule hierarchy has been devised very carefully by U P. We have discussed it a lot of time in board, working groups, public hearings. And round tables and we believe that the hierarchy is the only way of applying a proper harmonized practice of Islamic finance in one jurisdiction. As well as globally. Thank you very much for your kind comment. Uh brother Mohammed Adisa, I think that the regulators of Islamic banks, central banks and she and central banks etcetera etcetera need to. Be strict always enforcing compliance and not emotional when taking decision, otherwise those that want to be Islamic finance are the coward. Whereas what they practice is conventional banking should be sanctioned and if no improvement, their license should be withdrawn. Otherwise, they would do bad name to Islamic banking and Islamic finance in general. Brother Mohammed Adisa, fully agreed. Number one Islamic finance will be subject to internal Sharia compliance, Sharia audit, internal Sharia audit, external Sharia audit. We believe it should be Sharia subject to Sharia rating and the and the regulator should fall and should have a Sharia compliance inspection. My first major assignment for Islamic finance was actually a Sharia compliance inspection manual for a regulator. I believe these are the all steps are necessary. To have the right practices. For the for the banking, you have all these function, you have compliance function, you have internal audit function, you have external audit function, you have rating, you have. Central bank regulate, central banks, you know, uh central bank's inspection. So when you have these things on conventional side, why you can't have these things on Islamic side with the additional aspect of Sharia compliance and produce responsibility? Because this is part of these banks' commitment to the market that they are doing Sharia compliance. So they have to be Sharia compliant in true uh. In true spirit. And I fully agree with your comment that the enforcement of the Sharia standards and governance standards is in the hand of the regulators. And if they can't do these things directly, only thing what they need to do is. The regulators should adopt A O P's governance auditing and accounting standards. In addition to Sharia standards that can ensure overall implementation of all these things, Insha Allah. We are trying to work in this direction and we we thank for your support. Uh Isat Ussar has another comment, conventional efforts seem that minimizing legal differences are generally focused on minimizing the difference between. No national contract law. Such legal differences can act as a barrier to trade between contracting parties or less inclined to enter into a transaction when it is governed by law of another state. Standardization of these differences has to elevate the uncertainty of legal practitioners associated with foreign asset conflict of law rules. Foreign states' conflict of law rules and internationally agreed set of rules or standard is considered to be neutral and conducive to freeing up the flow of trade. Parties can adopt and use agreed standards to govern their transactions. Excellent comment, highly appreciated. We are doing Sharia standard for the same reason and we are trying to improve Sharia standards. We are coming up with a codification project of Sharia standards as well, which will which we believe will help in this. And we highly appreciate that the Bahrain as the first country has made A O P standard as part of law, not only as regulation or standard, but as part of law. Which means that the conflicting issues with the law have been resolved and that is a solution that we suggest that most of the Islamic finance jurisdictions eventually have to take. Mo- most countries with uh. Uh most countries which facilitate Islamic finance have adopted civil or common law legal system and do not possess the legal and regulatory infrastructure to adequately regulate and force Islamic finance transaction. A number of systemic legal issues originate from these gaps. These tend to undermine investors' confidence in the industry and impede sustainable development. These include enforceability issues, a lack of clarity in relation to the role and fact of Sharia municipal legal systems and underdeveloped securities law among other. This result in diminished legal certainty and possibility. Excellent comments. I highly appreciate your comments, very professional, very high quality comments. No disagreement at this part. We fully agree with you and we are trying to do these things by developing our standards. The next part is not in our hands. The next part is. That we are trying with the regulators to adopt our standards. And again, our standards might not be solution to everything. You need to adopt IFSB standards and certain other requirements are also there. Still, there are some gaps that U P is still trying to fulfill. But highly appreciated. You are very, 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 uh you know professionally written comments. The economic nature of commercial law suggests that the tendency to minimize legal difference is particularly evident when market forces provide a strong incentive for doing so. Market forces compel the use of standard form documentation comprising standards that reflect the commercial practice of law firms. Uh law firms and corporations. These legal practices are internal aspect of Islamic finance transaction. These illustrate the markets pull towards standardization as well as the ways in which. Islamic standards are molded on commercial standards documentation. This aspect of standardization should be treated as an important aspect of the endeavor in since. It underscores the ways in which Islamic finance standards are formed in the market. Can I suggest you something or request you something? Your comments are excellent. Can you just kindly expand them a little bit and send us to us for publishing in our journal, Joyfa? We highly appreciate your comments. These are very professionally drafted, but a little bit expansion to them. With some of the examples and some more solutions that you suggest. We highly appreciate uh if you can provide us in form of article or a paper for our journal. I I would I would I would request you to kindly submit that. You have my email address and you have the email address of governance at U P dot com. So we highly. Appreciate your further comments in writing on the standard as well as. The comments that you are making with regard to this harmonization and all that, these are very important and I would love if we can. Publish them in the journal for the greater audience. So if you can just put them in form of a paper, expand them a bit, put more examples and give it to us. As a as a you know, it will be your contribution towards betterment of the industry. What we can assure you is that we are trying to improve the practices by developing the right set of standards with inputs from experts like you. Are actually adding significant value to our standards. So for that, I think we highly appreciate your presence and we'll highly appreciate your comments and attendance the future public hearings as well. With that, since time is already over and people have started to leave for which I would like to apologize. So let's conclude today's session and and we can like you know move ahead to to Sister Zahra to conclude it. Thank you very much, everybody, for patient listening and for excellent comments today. Assalamualaikum Waalaikum Warahmatullahi Wabarakatuh.
Thank you very much, brother Omar. Thank you for our partners, Bob and TK Baby. Uh for their support, for their collaboration and we would like also to thank the the participants for their time. For their contribution and feedback. If you still have more comments. Please don't hesitate to contact us on governance at I F E dot com. And we Insha Allah, we will collect all the feedback and present it to the relevant working group and board. Insha Allah, we can meet you at the upcoming events and public hearings. Yaumanallah.
Sister Zahra, I think we should invite all the participants to U P's annual conference as well that I forget. Uh U P's annual annual eighteenth annual U P ISDB conference on Islamic finance and economics plan to be held on twenty nine thirtieth of. Uh of this month, November. Uh with that, we are also holding this time uh capacity building week starting from twenty eighth till uh till uh till second or third of December, Insha Allah. So all the details are available on U P's website. So we'd like to invite all of you and looking forward to meet all of you. Physically in the upcoming conference and capacity building week, Insha Allah. Thank you very much. Assalamualaikum.